I don't have a real formal presentation here. This is more of a question and answer, point of clarification. There seems to be... Let me back up. I'm Chris Mattrick, if you don't know me. I'm the district ranger here in Rochester. I'm the responsible official for the Robinson project. So I'm the one who gets to make the final decision on what will be implemented as part of that project. So, um, do you all know one another? Why don't we go quickly around the room and have everybody introduce themselves just so we... In case you're curious and you've forgotten somebody's name even though you've known them for 15 years, it'll like pop into your head.
I have a lot of that.
Okay. Kevin, I'm gonna start with you and we'll go that way.
Kevin McLaughlin.
Ruth McLaughlin.
Judy McCurryer.
Brad McCurryer.
Matt Bear.
Chris Williams.
Harlan McCurryer.
I'm Jay Strand and I do work here. You may recognize me if not my face.
Jason Weisfeld.
David Hamer.
Eric Bowman.
Walt Wells.
Tony Delart, yes.
I've got a file back there somewhere.
William Brockoff.
Rod Lee.
Linda Lee.
Mason Wade.
That was it? The last one on the line.
All right. So, now I can go back to where I was. So, and then Desmond is doing our videography for us back there.
But he's not pointing it at you.
No, he's pointing it. So, you know, we received, we had our official 30-day comment period for the preliminary EA that went out and we received comments from a number of you, not all of you, but a number of you. And there, through those comments, it became clear to me that there was some good comments in there, but there also seems to be a little bit of confusion still about what is actually being proposed, especially related to recreation in the area, but maybe some other general confusion. So there is not another opportunity in this process for public comment, for you to like lodge official comments. We've had the two official comment periods. There is an opportunity to object. If you so, if you've made comments at one of the official comment periods, you could object to the project. And that opportunity is upcoming within a week or so, right? Jay? Something like that?
Yeah.
How will we be notified of that?
Will there be a notification about a period of objection?
Jay, let's tell them the process on that.
Yes, yes, there will be, just like, just like when we rolled out the EA for 30-day comment. It'll be the same.
Okay.
The objection period. It'll last for 45 days.
So you'll be notified?
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
By mail?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, it is.
Objection, the same thing as appeal.
It is a pre-decisional process as opposed to a post-decisional process. So, we will release the final EA and a draft decision notice, which is my decision, and that draft decision notice will stay in draft form, awaiting the outcome of the objection period. So it'll sit there, I don't actually sign it, it just sits there, but it's what I would sign if no one objects. So it's just, it is like the appeal period, Eric, but it happens before the decision is actually signed. It's trying to keep, because when you appeal, you often...
Oh, so you're appealing the decision, that's right.
You're objecting to the decision.
No, but I mean, the appeal is to the decision, yes.
It was, there is no appeal, appeal process, any law.
Oh, that's interesting.
You object before, and then we try to resolve the issue related to the objection. And then if...
Then we all get out with the sheriff. Okay.
Okay? So you'll all be, if you made, everyone will be notified of the release of the final EA and the draft decision notice. And then if you had commented as part of one of the legal comment periods, and not all of you have, some, most of you have, I think, submitted some comments, you can then object on, you have to have raised that issue, right, in your comment? Jay, is that correct?
Yeah, unless there's something new that's come up.
Right.
Need new information or no analysis that didn't occur during the first two opportunities for comment, then you then have the ability to object to that.
Right.
Yep.
What is this? Oh, I'm sorry. In mid-September, is this what we're talking?
Next week it'll start.
Yeah, I'd say within a week or so.
And it starts next week and then it's the final date?
Forty-five days. Forty-five days.
Forty-nine, forty-five days.
Yep.
I've got a problem with my email address. I gave it to somebody a couple of times.
Brad forwarded it to me today, or today or yesterday. I can't remember.
I did, yeah.
So we have, we have the, we have the email address now, Harlan. And I would get, I would notify you...
Yeah, I like stuff writing.
On the phone, or in writing.
So what happened to the appeal process?
It was removed through federal statute. They changed it to the objections process. You've got to ask Jay as to why they did that.
And when was that?
It's been, it's been a while, it's been like five or six years. The reason they changed it was because when people were appealing after the decision was made and changes were being made as the result of trying to address the appeals, then we had the, in many cases, since it's agency-wide, changes were being made to the analysis and even sometimes to the decision, and it became very messy because it was already supposed to have been a dumb deal. And also after a decision's rendered, there became this like iron curtain block of communication between people who were reviewing the appeal and those who actually wrote the analysis and provided the information to address the appeals. And so now that they moved the, it's the same process except they call it an objection because it's prior to the decision actually being made, like Chris already explained, but it allows us to fix or change or potentially even address through additional analysis prior to making the decision so we don't have to like go back and reopen another comment period or... And also it allows free flow, it's free flow of communication between all parties. So it just makes for a much more transparent process because post-decision administration was like this very strict regulation that kept people from talking transparently or whatever. It became very laborious. So that's why they, that's why they changed it. And it seems to be working pretty well, actually, the change. I like to change myself because it can get things up, up front, before the decision actually is signed by the deciding officer.
So we're still able to fight too?
Mm-hmm. Yep. It is a possibility, yeah.
It is possible, yep.
Thank you. Susan.
Hi.
Hello. Okay. So my thought here was to kind of walk, the recreation proposal seemed to be the ones that there's the most confusion around in Bingo. And I just wanted to go, kind of go through them one by one so that you understand what is happening, what is being proposed in Bingo. We can talk about other parts of the Robinson project, but certainly most of the questions and confusion seems to be related to Bingo. Okay? Is that all right to start with?
Same.
Very good. So I'm gonna go, see my little cursor crossing around here? So, I'm gonna start right here because this is one of the current spots where the kiosk is right here, just past Jason's, the road up to Jason's camp, past the cemetery. There's a little roadside pullout there that has a kiosk in it. In our world, it's actually nothing, which is why you see no symbol right there. There is a kiosk there, but in our recreation inventory, infra, is what it's called, it doesn't exist as a site. So what we're doing is we're, and it's very strange to us to have this kiosk that introduces you to, you're now the dispersed Bingo camp sites out here, way down here at the end of the road. And we have on occasion had people camp at that spot, some people pleasantly camping, some people unpleasantly camping. Our proposal is to move it up to here, where this P is. Now the P is much bigger on the map than the actual impact on the ground will be because if it would be made a little tiny P, you wouldn't be able to see it on the map. This is campsite one, what's currently campsite one, the one that's right off the edge of the road. We're going to install that kiosk or a kiosk that's very similar to it at that location, do a little bit of site modification to make it able to handle a car pulling in there or a couple of cars pulling in there. And this will be the introduction into the Bingo campground area, the Bingo recreation facility that's down there. There will be nothing back down here. That grassy spot will still remain there. People will probably still, I will still park there when I go to walk my dogs out there because that's where I park now, but it's not a parking area. It's not maintained by us in any way. It's currently not maintained by us, the parking area itself. Harlan.
So, exactly what do you have planned for parking at that kiosk?
I just said, we're gonna, it's currently a campground, a campsite, campsite one. You could probably park two cars comfortably there. We're just gonna smooth it out. There's some stubs sticking up there on the ground so that you could fit maybe three cars in that spot comfortably. So you could get off the road if someone were to stop and they were looking at the kiosk.
So it's a whole hundred foot long by 10 feet deep?
No, no. It's gonna look almost identical to what it does now except it will be a little, the firing will be removed, some of the stubbed trees that people have cut in there around the campsite will be smoothed out. We'll probably put gravel down so that people don't sink in when they park in there, but we're not expanding it beyond its current, really, its current footprint.
And it won't be a campsite anymore?
It will not be a campsite anymore.
Will you post it one way or another?
What's that, Eric?
Will you post it one way or another?
What do you mean, post it?
Well...
Oh, you'll be posting no camping at that spot, yes.
You'll post no camping, but you post, it will ever show up as no parking.
Well, it wouldn't be no parking, people could still park there.
Still park there.
Yep.
No camp.
Eric, are you talking about this location, what is now campsite one?
No, no, no.
No, you're back down.
I understand where you're talking.
We won't post this, no camping.
No.
Or no parking, rather. We would post it, no camping. We're gonna try to just make it go away on its own.
Well, people will park here because they get on the path to the swimming hole in the summer time.
Right. And I park here to walk my dogs.
Yeah, so you, you know, people don't wanna...
And other people park there.
You don't want to park on the road.
Right.
Hey, Chris.
Jay.
When you said that we're going to...
Four cars?
No, we say a hundred feet by twenty feet.
That's about what it is now, though. That's not beyond what it is now. If you look at the whole campsite from beginning to end, it's about a hundred feet by twenty feet. It's to accommodate four, four cars, four or five cars. Because it's just a wayside, pull in, get your information, and then drive up the road to the campsite.
Does that say parking a hundred by twenty feet?
So the parking area will be approximately 100 feet wide by 20 feet.
That's what I thought.
And that's about what it is now, Harlan. It's not, I mean, it's not too far removed from that. We're not gonna change it considerably from what it is presently in its size.
But a hundred by twenty foot parking lot certainly is dangerous.
Well, what happens now, though, if people park in plain this road, which is where you don't want it? Just for one thing.
He's up here, he's talking about those trucks, Jason's, that's...
Hundred feet by twenty feet, figured out, twenty feet per car, that's more than thirty feet.
You had to actually find somebody, you know? That's...
Yeah. So, that's the one thing, actually, you're not... What's the problem?
They often have to park in his, right, in his way, in plain his road. They just block, plant his road, park in there.
Right.
So an extra couple of parks.
Especially in the winter.
So, you know, an extra couple of parks by the kiosk might not be a bad thing.
Right.
Should we... Is that what you should...
We can't, we can't post no parking, so...
The town, they're all like, "It's a town road."
Can you post a sign telling, directing people where to park? Because I have a problem with people parking right along my property and they're using their parking there to go walk up into Forest or use Forest Service land. And I'd like them to be directed to go use that public parking rather along my road.
We can't post anything, we can't post on non-federal land, we can't put federal signs on non-federal land. So we couldn't post like in front of your house, we couldn't put a sign, parking, I guess we could if, if you approved us putting a sign in front of your house.
Yeah.
You know, we're also, we're also a little more concerned about sign pollution out there, too, if you need any signs, but we will certainly try to encourage people to park out, you know, where the parking is designated.
How will you do that before they get there, though? Because people are parking along the road.
Well, we still, this spot right here is still Forest Service jurisdiction right here, where the current kiosk is. So we could, we could put a signpost in there that says parking straight ahead.
It doesn't do me any good.
Back here, we're a little more challenged with putting parking. So people park in front of your house?
They park along the road. We have, we have a drive that goes down, we have a separate, actually, way. They park along in there, and there's trees along there, so they think, they think, oh, it's not a good deal. But that road really isn't wide enough to have two cars pass by, a person that's pulled over to park along there. And there's also, you know...
I mean, Chittenden, the Chittenden parking and campgrounds are four miles up. They even announce that right at the roadside so people know they have to go four miles to get there. At Bingo, you come off the road, people go down there a quarter of a mile, they think they're there, but they're really not there. You gotta go another three miles.
So that would be more putting something out here.
Send them up the hell of those! I just, I think the...
Pull on the lawn, right? And, you know, just a lack of knowledge, people would get off 73, they see there's their road.
They prefer to stand on the...
And the road is just, like, there's not a lot of room for much of anybody to go in these houses on the corner there.
Right.
But, you know, some kind of a sign that might say Bingo camping four miles or something, just a brief, big sign that's clear, just so that people know, you gotta go three miles to get to the recreational area, much like you have in Chittenden off of 73.
Right. So, I'll say, I'll say two things in response. One is, it would have been great to know that when we were developing the proposed action for Robinson. I mean, we had numerous public meetings and opportunities to come. This is the first time I've heard of that specific thing, Susan, about a sign down in that area. So, you know, that's what we have all those public meetings for and opportunities to come, is to get that kind of information so we can get it in the proposal. Secondarily, we don't need a NEPA decision to be able to put a sign in along a road to deal with a public information issue. That's not, we don't have to go through the whole NEPA process. So we can certainly work with you all on signing the end of the road appropriately so people know that Chittenden, or Bingo Brook Recreation Area is X number of miles in. I think the challenge will be, what, where does Bingo Brook Recreation Area as an undefined entity really begin?
Sure.
I mean, I would argue that it probably begins right here. I know that Harlan has property and Brad and Mason have property and a couple other folks have property up in here, but you know, if you look at the block of Forest Service land, it really, it really begins here. So we could work maybe with Andy, talk about putting a sign out here where the road number sign is, 42, and put a sign that says, you know, Bingo Brook Recreation Area, X number of miles ahead, camping X number of more miles ahead. I mean, we can do that without having to get way late in the, in the NEPA process. So, I'll, I'm gonna take a note and, and work with you all to get that kind of signing. I'm not saying it's going to prevent people from parking where they won't, because unless you get the town to post that portion of the road, no parking, or the state for that matter, post that portion of the road, no parking, it would be a challenge.
Can you put a sign, do not blockade? We do have a sign there.
It's just that people are confused. They don't really think they're there when they get there, but then they really, they don't know.
Say, Chris?
I think one should do...
Let me, let me just, hold on, just let this note down.
It's a fair point. We had a couple, pull off the road at our dressing area that we hung on the side of the road, sat down, put on a blanket, had a lunch. They had, I don't know what their religion was, but they had, they had all their caps and clothes on, they had wool coats. It was 100 degrees outside.
Chris. Yes, Jay. If you just wanna move on.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
Just so you don't have to delay the blanket.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I said a little...
Just so you don't have to delay for yourself to take...
I didn't bother. All right, break it.
Oh, I just had one. The parking issue, I think for some of us, these folks, is post your meeting because there was a fair amount of, I think, attention drawn to parking over the winter. And I think it's that...
In Bingo, there was attention brought to parking?
Not that place, but further down the road, and I'm sure you're aware of it.
Which was unrelated to any Forest Service activities, right?
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just saying parking as a, as something that's a sensitive issue perked up a lot.
Again, but I'll, I'll push back a little bit. The 30-day comment period opened on June 5th. So there was an opportunity at that point to raise an issue with parking. And it's not an issue, I mean, we can, we can manage the signing and try to get people to the right place outside of the NEPA process. Mason.
The purple is designating the Joseph Patel Wilderness?
No. Why don't you let me just move through? I'm gonna try to do this in some kind of stepwise fashion so we all, we stay on track and we're not still here at 9:30 or 10 o'clock, but I will be if you wanna stay that long. I think I'm gonna lose Kevin by that point, though.
You're bad.
So, so related to, so we're losing this campsite that's here. See the little campsite symbol here? So we're gonna lose that as a campsite. We know that this is a popular area to camp at certain times. It's not full all the time, but there are times when it's, it's busy. So we're going to add, we're adding two additional campsites because we don't wanna decrease the number of campsites there. We're adding two additional campsites further out, up here. See my cursor moving around? They were former campsites. There were two of the sites that were closed when we did, when Bingo was completely out of hand and people were camping in the river and doing things we don't want them to do in the river. These were closed, they were pretty hard hit, they have rehabilitated themselves, they're already hardened. There is some adjustment that needs to be done to provide for parking because we don't wanna allow people to drive up into them, which is what they used to do. So we'll be making some modification along the road edge to allow for parking and people accessing these two sites. They're way out at the end of the road, they're on the, on the north side. If you drive down there, they're the two sites that are up on the terrace.
They say, right now, they say...
They say no camping. Yeah, no overnight camping.
It's the trail that it takes to get to...
Monster area gap.
Yeah, there is, there is some, both road up there that goes in that direction. Yep. So that's the, that's the change, changing to kind of information and camping along Bingo Brook Road. There's no other change, no other planned use except, what, have I missed something?
Site two.
Yeah, so site two, I'm gonna get to, but as far as addition, this campsite being taken away and the interpretive sign put there, this camps, these two campsites being added. Site two, which is right here, which is the one that's down away from the road, it's the biggest, maybe it's not the biggest site there, but it's the site with access, we're making some, we're expanding the parking down there a little bit to allow someone with a larger camper or a horse trailer to be able to get down in there and park and turn around. So you've been able, because right now you get down there with a trailer, there's, you're making, you're disconnecting and spinning the trailer around by hand unless it's a real small one to get back out again.
Is it dry camping only?
Is it, what's that?
It's dry camping only, correct?
Dry, I'm not understanding.
The trailer has to sustain itself without any...
Yeah, we don't have any, we don't have any pump facilities or water or anything like that, yes. All of our camping is pack it in, pack it out at this site.
It seems funny you call it primitive camping, but they can't even handle it.
Oh, it's, it's... You're putting houses down there, I think.
Yeah, it's actually, Bingo Brook is a developed campground, so...
Is that the definition of primitive?
Well, it's primitive in that there's no water, there's no picnic tables, there's no... So let me tell you the story behind what happened with Bingo Brook. It was a dispersed primitive camping location. And the camping there, as the longer-term residents would know, it was before my time, got a little out of hand at some point in the past, and people were camping everywhere.
Six, 700 people on...
Yep, so camp, pooping in the water, camping in, you know, just, it got ugly.
Everybody's camping along the river, everybody's using the facilities along the river, and the next rainstorm you got, I can remember when Bingo Brook had the most colorful initiative any other Brook in the state.
It was bad. So what happened at that point in time was, we did a closure order on Bingo Brook except at designated sites. In order to designate sites, we have to number sites. Once you number sites, in our world, it becomes a developed campground. So, although the sign still says Bingo Brook Primitive Camping, it's really a developed campground where you can only camp at those sites. No one can come in and park in one of those grassy sites that looks really lush and nice because it's closed.
So will you rebrand this somehow appropriately, or will we still brand it as primitive?
You can brand it how, we just call it the Bingo Brook Campground.
Okay, that's great. And I think that would be the appropriate description.
You can't reserve it, there's no fee to camp there, there's no facilities other than fireworks.
It's a sign where I always still say primitive.
Yeah, that's a holdover.
Yeah, and I think there's a conflict between primitive and the 24-foot trailers coming in. And I'm not against it, I just think that it's no longer primitive.
Yeah, but there is no, no plan for water pumping stations, that was one of the things that was in someone's comment, was, you know, that it was gonna get developed and to be able to like come in and pump your sewage out there, there would be something like that there. No, we're just making it suitable so that you could take a horse trailer or a larger trailer down to that location and camp.
How will that be disseminated and made, the information be made available to people interested in camping, or will people know that that's the site for those trailers?
That'll be, well, we have a recreation opportunity guide for Bingo Brook. So that'll be added, that'll be updated and added once the decision is signed, and then that'll be available on our website, too.
So that they're not in his yard trying to turn around a 40?
I can't, I mean, I can't prevent that.
I know, I know. And I'm thinking, you know, people go there now for what it is now.
Right.
When you start putting the neon sign up that says trash this, trash this, trash this, you lose it.
Right.
You know? You lose it. And it just seems like incrementally, that's where we're headed.
I mean, we're not changing the use.
You know, I get it, I get it.
Yep.
The logging will go away in a couple of years, you know?
Yep.
And it'll be better years down the road. Every, this, some of this development isn't gonna go away. It's only gonna get worse. There's gonna be more people, it's gonna bring more people in, and then you lose what people go there now for.
Well, it'll be, they're, like I said, we're not changing the use, you know, we're adding one campsite, we're modifying another campsite to allow a little bit larger vehicle get to. And we're not talking about a fifth wheel.
I mean, we're talking about, you know, we're gonna do this with it. I mean, already we got bicycle magazines with this proposed trail.
Yep.
I mean, I've seen the influx just this summer of people with bikes compared to last year, you know, just with a couple of magazine articles, you know? So, I mean, it's, it's nice that people could find something pristine and, you know, it gets around enough that way without putting a sign up.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Mason.[1623.12]
Okay, uh, site, campsite two.
Yup.
We're talking about a horse trailer.
Yup.
Okay, adventure horse trailer brings in three horse trailers for adventure activity with horses. Now, how many RVs are gonna be able to camp in here? Are generators gonna be not allowed to be run?
There's no restriction on generators.
Well, it's right downhill from my house.
There's no, there's no, well, your house back here, right?
What, uphill from the, from the...
So there's no restriction, there's no restriction now on anyone using a generator.
Well, there'll be a gate for the winter on that because of the way that, uh, that gets used for high school partying down there.
The, the gate that we...
No, I'm talking about the gate on forty-two D, which is campsite two.
We don't have any plans to put a gate in here.
Why not?
Cause we don't see the need to put a gate in there.
Well, what happened last fall, my daughter and I were down there. There was two shit things that were dumped over in November and I came in and reported it.
Yup.
But this is because it's too easy to get in there. We need a gate on that location.
Well, I, I would have a hard time justifying a, a gate on a dispersed campground that you can camp in.
Well, I'll tell you why. Because when the road is stopped, allowed, it's still easy enough to get to forty-two D. It's a short enough distance to, to run yourself in there.
Okay.
I mean, there's a problem like there. I mean, it's easy enough to get in there.
But you're, so I, again, I'm gonna have a problem restricting, restricting access to public land.
Why?
Cause it's public land.
I know, but you have a gate on sixty-two.
That's to protect the road resource.
Well, let's protect the river resources.
So you're saying the gate would be closed at the same time in the, the sixty-two is closed?
Yes. Close at the same time as sixty-two.
Well, I mean, if we put a gate at the, right in front of Alan's house, we'd close that gate as I offered to, to...
Uh, yeah, that's not my jurisdiction.
I understand, but you understand where my point was coming from. That issue he takes up, curves all the way past that. And then we should just eliminate all those concerns by letting the town put us a gate right there at Alan's house.
Yeah, that, that would be between the red, the, the residents and the town.
But for you, forty-two D is a possibility to put a gate up that would be locked at the same height as sixty-two.
We currently have no plans to put a, a gate at sixty-two, forty-two, forty-two D.
So you'll be able to have a...
Is there a year round camping if you wanted to work to camp?
You, you could walk out there and camp in the winter if you wanted to. Or ski out there and camp in the winter if you wanted to.
But not designated site. They, they could use it as a designated site, but they can go anywhere in the, in the woods.
You're in the closure area. You can't, you can't camp anywhere in the closure area. You have to be in one of the designated sites in the winter.
Have you issued any winter camping? Don't you give permits for people for the campsites?
No, Bingo is free.
It's free, but they have...
They don't need a permit for tourists come first serve.
No, you don't need a permit to camp. And you can generally camp anywhere on the national forest. I have, I've had labs, that big tail. You can camp anywhere on the national forest except where it's prohibited. So, um, and that's typically developed areas, like in places where there's a closure order specifically in place like this location.
So for forty-two D, we're gonna let RVs in there.
You could drive an RV out there now if you wanted to in camp, if you could get in.
And you could run your generators and have your TVs and your everything. And I'm telling you, it's directly downhill from my house.
Okay, I, I understand that, Mason.
But you're encouraging RVs to park in, in forty-two D.
They already do.
You can bring a generator in the back of a pickup truck and drive in there.
We're, we're just making it available so that someone could go down there with a horse trailer or a small tow behind trailer and get turned around so that they're not gonna get stuck down in.
Drive in and have a place to back up.
It's gonna be more of like I called the sack.
All right, site two, you're also making it work for a couple of RVs.
It's already, they're already...
You already could drive an RV down there, Mason.
Well, you can't turn around as easily.
If you're not...
You build it better.
If you're not, my, the, the only way I can put this to try to make this understandable is we're not changing the use in a way that I anticipate that there's going to be a sudden influx of new use down there. I would, I would guess that you're going to see the same level of use from camping at Bingo Brook. That it's not going to change in any significant way. If it suddenly does change, you know, five years out, three years out, ten years out, we suddenly see all kinds of RV traffic down there that's, that's unsustainable and having resource impacts. We'll respond to that at that time.
Question then, with the forest clearing around that campsite, what does that entail?
Forest clean?
Yes, they, what, the plan is for cutting around that campsite.
Vegetation management?
Yes, because now that we marked every tree red on my northern property line, it relates to that cutting, I assume.
There's, there's no harvesting proposed anywhere around your house, Mason.
Apple tree release, what's the deal?
There's nothing, you see this green right here? This is just forest.
Well, it's not green red, where campsite two is.
Right, you're down in here, I'd have to zoom into that.
Yes.
A little bit more. Maybe one more. So, we're talking about...
Right there?
Right in here. Ten. Nice squeeze between... That's apple tree release in there. That's apple tree release in there. So that's finding the existing apple trees that occur in that area and cutting the competing vegetation around them to release the trees so that they produce better fruit. It's not a commercial timber harvest, it's done by hand.
So it makes everything kind of look nicer for the campsite area?
Well, it makes, no, it's done for wildlife purposes.
Yeah, okay.
Is there, is it, would it set a new precedence or would be somehow illegal to enact a quiet time zone for generators?
Um, it, it does not, there already are quiet hours at campgrounds. I don't, I was just camping somewhere else on the state park campground since it was ten PM. And I don't wanna say that it's ten PM for our campgrounds right off the top of my head, but I can look that up and find out.
Would it, would it?
It does not set a precedent. It would be, you know, we don't patrol at night, so enforcing it would be a bit of a challenge. Unless we had a chronic, you know, if there was a chronic issue with one group of campers, you could then report it and then we could send someone down.
Correct.
So, I mean, would it be possible in your new signage as you re-sign this area and re-instruction, instructional use to create a quiet time for generators and campers? Let's at least get it out there in print that says, hey, you know, be courteous, be kind. You know, shut the motors off at ten PM and don't start them again until six in the morning.
Six.
Seven, eight, nine.
Is everybody out of bed by six o'clock around here? I mean, Jesus.
Not unless I hear the generator.
Well, then you want to set your one o'clock.
My God, you're running the night.
Eric, grab your hand up there. What about Harlan, Eric's had his hand up for a while.
I, I had a question, just a sort of clarification there. There, with campsite two, you're saying that the proposal is to enlarge that to some degree so that you can move some sort of, maybe an RV in that area and use it for horse parking as well? Are those concurrent uses?
You mean like an RV and a horse trailer down there at the same time? That would be up to whoever the user was?
Well, no, I mean, if you have multiple users, that's... I mean, if you can have somebody drive an RV in there, can you then, is all, is it okay for somebody just to try to park their horse trailer in there as well?
Next, you mean like next to the RV?
Well, you say it needs to work here.
I'm struggling a little bit with what you're asking me, Eric, I'm sorry, I'm being a little...
Instead of camping, can you bring a horse trailer in there and park it for the day?
If you weren't camping?
Yeah.
If there was nobody else, yes.
If there was nobody camping there, yes. Because it's not like one of our fee sites where you can't leave, you can't have an unoccupied campsite. You can't occupy a campsite unless you're camping at a, at a campground.
Do you plan to limit the horses? Like twenty people to a site, do you plan to limit the horses to that site?
There's no proposal to limit the horses to this site other than what would be limited naturally by, by the size, the size of the trailer. You wouldn't be able, we're talking like a two horse trailer size thing, not one of those big, wrong. I'm looking for the specifics.
Is that in the plan? That it only can be a two horse trailer, not a four horse trailer?
Well, it's, it's more...
Again, that's up to the user if they wanna get some wedged in down there.
I think I'd see a beautiful Saturday afternoon in October when any number of horse trailers show up once there's...
Once they use their cell phones.
Equestrian trail. Yes, they're going to be an area for trailers two through ten to turn around and park. Beautiful fall day, the word is out, there's horse trails. There's no guarantee only one trailer's gonna show up.
That's correct, but once one person is occupying it, you wouldn't really be able to get another trailer down in there.
Well, that's why I'm asking, where are trailers through to, through two through ten parking for the day?
That is up to the operator of the trailer to figure out where they are going to go with that. And there would be nothing, there would be nothing preventing sites five, right across from Thresher Hill Road, that five?
It's up Thresher Hill. Six is right, is right.
The one right at the corner.
Yes.
Right across from Thresher Hill Road, that big log site where Ellie and, uh...
Dead, uh?
Yeah, were a couple of years ago where they've certainly gone. That's plenty big enough to accommodate another horse trailer. So somebody could go there now in horse camp. Somebody, there's no, there's no restriction on bringing a camper or a horse trailer in there right now to camp, park, ride their horse. So that's really not going to change in any way. We're just providing a facility that will make it a little bit easier at that particular site. If somebody calls us and says, I got a horse trailer, I wanna go camping. Is there a campsite that I can go to that's in the Rochester area? Bingo would be one of the places that we could send them to site two. That we know that you could get down there, turn around with a trailer without getting wedged in there.
Still first come, first served, though.
Still first come, first served, still free.
No camping, but we wanna go ride horses all day long.
They could do that, there's no restriction against that.
So you can have ten trailers in there, nowhere...
You won't be able to fit ten trailers.
I'm not talking about that particular location, I'm talking about Bingo Basin.
You can do it now. You can do it now.
Where are they gonna park? Where are they gonna turn around?
At each campsite.
No, because they don't know.
Wherever they find space to turn around, they can drive out to the end of the road.
Another thing, they, they can do all this stuff now. They can bike out there, they can ride horses out there. But yet, you know, we're gonna take that campsite, we're gonna be a big oval there for supposedly only one RV and maybe a pickup and a, and a horse trailer. Why can't you just have a, you know, a drive in with a campsite and just a good place where you got a straight shot backing up? Instead of, you know, just making this thing huge, then it's gonna show up on a map someplace and it's, and it's gonna be in a magazine. And then the next thing, there's gonna be a thousand people up there. And the next thing you know, we got the same problem we had before, too many people in one spot at one time.
No, because it's restrictions, just like with the cameras.
No, there's no restrictions.
Fourteen people.
Yeah, but there's no restrictions.
And, we don't, I'm sorry, how many people?
Twenty.
Fifteen days.
Fourteen days.
Twenty, yeah.
You can't have more than twenty people, but that's, that's, I mean, you wouldn't be...
Talk to you about Saturday.
One site.
I've never seen a first die there in twenty years that's been there.
Good, you know, just saying.
I was always told it couldn't.
Well, there you go. But now there's an after that on the iPhone, horse place, ch-ch-ch.
Horse place. So after I'm done, I go, one Saturday, the word's out, let's, everybody pig pile into Bingo Basin with your horse trailers and let's have our rodeo event.
So the answer to that is the same as camping.
So it's going to happen. It's going to happen.
The answer to that is the same as camping. If there's no more room, you have to drive out and go somewhere else. If the site is filled, the site, if all ten of them sites are filled, you drive out.
But what I'm saying is for Jake, it is, that if somebody's loaded up their horses, driven over a mountain, you know, for God only knows how far to go ride that day, they're just gonna pull off to the side of the road, which isn't very...
They can't block the road, they have to go to a destination.
We would, we would enforce that they can't block the road. So if we, if they were blocking the road, we would go down and if they were there, we'd tell them to move. If they weren't there, we would get them towed out of the way if they were blocking the road.
Or initially, we're gonna wipe it.
I know, to be completely honest, I think we're overestimating, massively overestimating the amount of use from a horse perspective that this one trail, one trail managed for horse use is going to draw people into this valley to get ten, twenty horse trailers in here on a sunny day on an October afternoon to ride four mile, five mile, six mile loop trail. It, I am hard pressed to imagine that.
The return on investment's not really that great.
Yeah, I, I would just say I've been on the trails over in, um, over by Sugar Hill Reservoir that are horse trails and I've, I bike over there, I've never seen...
Never seen a horse, right?
I haven't seen it.
We, we, we did, this proposal, this proposal came out of the Vermont Horse Council, that first meeting that we had. They were here, they were one of the partners that was in the room. Um, and they, they had a request to, um, enhance horse back riding opportunity within this project area. They had a couple of other proposals that crossed private land. They weren't able to secure the private land permission. I actually don't think they tried or to secure the private land permission. We said that we would not pursue something that crossed private land without then first securing that permission. So this is the one remaining horse proposal because it's all on national forest system land. It's all an existing trail already. So it just needs a little bit of improvement to the water bars and the, and the clearing height to have a horse go up. And really the only portion of the trail that we're talking about that even needs that is this section right here of the Pine Brook Trail. This little piece up to the end of Thresher Hill Road. And again, I'm, I'm hard pressed to think that we're gonna get twenty horse trailers in here even on a nice beautiful day to ride that very short loop.
But your cognizance and your concern, your enforcement officers, who visit the place twice a day or once a day and so now we just know that there's gotta be a surveillance and monitoring and if it becomes an issue, it'll have to be addressed.
That's correct.
And it's wonderful to have another designated trail.
Same trail, but another designated use on that trail. Yeah, yup. So, I think we beat site two up pretty good. We got some notes, we got some, we heard, we heard some of the things we were saying and I think there's some things that we can do. You know, we can even sign the end of that road probably, you know, even though that there's a limited turnaround that maybe they wanna go down and check first to make sure that there's not a horse trailer down there already.
That's good to hear.
This pink right here is the pine, what we call the Pine Brook Trail. It's made up of portions of, it actually comes back down here to the loop, but that's actually not part of the trail in our world, but... This is the trail, this portion is Thresher Hill Road. And then this portion is Bingo Brook Road, Bingo Road.
Sixty-two.
Yup, this is sixty-two, yup. So this is adding the horse use onto that trail. That's what that pink is.
How, how does that work with, sharing that with a mountain biker or so? How, I mean, who, how does that work?
We don't, we don't, and it's such a low use trail. We realize that there's, you know, Harlan said there's been an uptick this year. They're probably riding that, although I just walked by it the other day and it's pretty heavily grown in at the beginning, so they're not riding it too, too much. Again, that would be, we don't anticipate a conflict between horses and bicyclists as long as there, if the trail is wide enough. Certainly the roads are wide enough for that. So the only place that there might be a conflict would be in here. And we don't have any documentation. We talked to both user groups and they, they're not concerned about potential conflict.
How, just how does it work, though? If you have a biker and a horse back rider, are the bikers supposed to just get off?
The biker would have to, would have to give way to the horse back rider.
And I, I just wonder too about that, that section where you're coming down. I, I bike down, I do that looping.
Yup.
And, um...
You're coming down.
I come down, so if there's a horse coming up, it would be hard for me to stop quickly.
Yeah.
That's the, I would say the horse is shooting going that way.
Some of the improvements are in, the, the clearing with, to provide additional sight lines on that so that you would be able to see each other at a good enough distance that you can be able to stop.
Yeah.
Or slow down or...
Or they should just be aware that bikers coming down fast might not be able to...
So the blue line should be up over Philadelphia at the end of the car.
I'm just going down there.
Okay, so this right here, uh, these blue lines, so that one, this one, and this one, I'm getting a little bit outside of Bingo here, but they're all the same, are decommissioned trails, trails being proposed to be decommissioned. So the Facet Basin Trail is gone and not coming back. The estimate to recreate that trail in a sustainable manner is up close to, if not over a million dollars. It's not going to happen. So that trail is being decommissioned. This is the Smith Brook Road sixty-one. It's also got the Smith Brook Trail overlaid on it. This is an administrative act to take the trail off the road. The road will be there, you can walk on the road. There's no reason for us to have a trail designation overlaid on a road designation. Doesn't make any sense. And then this is the Philadelphia Peak Trail. This was never intended to be a, in our database, it's an administrative trail only and it's administrative trail to access the repeater site. And with the repeater being proposed to be removed, there's no need to have the trail. We don't plan to obliterate the road. This doesn't mean you can't walk up there. It just means we are not managing it for a trail because we never have managed it for anything more than an administrative access point. So the road will there, we're not gonna obliterate it, we're gonna leave it in place and it will just grow in over time. The purple up here is all wilderness, so it, it just doesn't go anywhere for us anymore.
Is that just a batel?
This is batel.
All the purple eyelac color is all, that's all wilderness.
So you can turn the green into purple?
Uh, no, Congress could turn the green into purple.
I'm good.
Holy shit.
You would then have very limited access to your home.
I don't know about that.
And it's, it would be highly...
Good are those forests? Tell me what good they are. They're overgrown, there's no feed for animals. That's the same problem that we've had over in our basin. I can remember every time you went out, you'd see deer. You don't see deer. I haven't seen deer in fifteen years out there. You know why? Because there's no growth. They used to come out where there used to be pasture land, once a year. National forests that come out with a brush hog and brush hog.
But they're not.
But they don't. And now they've all grown in, it's all woods. You can't find the old apple tree.
What has happened there anymore? Whatever happened to that work?
You know?
What happened to that?
So don't tell me about wilderness. That's the biggest bullshit in the whole frigging country.
I disagree.
I'm done.
Unfortunately, wilderness is important to a lot of people.
So... But it's not good for the land.
Well, that's disagreeable, too, but we won't go there right now.
So as I look through here, the only thing that I see that we haven't talked about specifically is this yellow line right here. Okay, so this is the proposed route of what's called the Vellamont Trail. So the Vellamont is, is an idea of the Vermont Huts Association and the Vermont Mountain Bike Association. We'll call it end to end. Whether it actually ends up being end to end is somewhat in question. They're not even sure they desire it to be end to end, but a long distance mountain biking trail, similar to the Long Trail for hikers, the Downhill Trail for skiers. Single track mountain bike trail that would run essentially from the end of the state to the end of the state. Right now, they're talking about from Stowe to Killington. That's the area that they're concentrating on. And it would have huts that you would be able to, like, stay in the huts as you pedaled along. What they're really trying to do is connect pods of existing mountain bike trails, like networks of mountain bike trails, Blueberry Lake Trails, for example. There's a big trail network up in, further up into Waitsfield, and then there's one up in Stowe. They're trying to connect them with this Vellamont Trail, so you can be able to ride the trail, ride to the next trail, stay at a hut, ride that trail system, then keep working your way down. This is the proposed route as it passes through this area. So the dashed line right here, you see how this is dashed? So this is all existing. This is an existing, this is the Swansmill Road, Swansmill Trail, it's a snowmobile trail, it's a road for much of it. The black and yellow dashed right here is something that, it doesn't exist. That doesn't mean that there's not a trace out there that it would follow, but it doesn't exist as an existing road, a managed road, a managed trail. Cause I, I mean, we know that there is, there is some trace of a road here. We do know that there is a trace of a road up here. There's a trace of a road right here, if you look real close. So this is what's being proposed, it's a proposed crossing of Bingo Road. There's not a parking lot planned, there is not a kiosk planned in the way of, like a trailhead planned in the way of, like, a kiosk, like, announcing, like, here crosses the Vellamont, stop here and ride. It's just a crossing. The hub is over here at the parking lot for Chittendenbrook Campground, and then up at Chittendenbrook Campground, where there's a hut going in on one of the campsites there. So that's kind of the destination, and then back this way, the destination is here, you're sitting right here, because the trailhead is gonna be over here at North Hollow Farm, Martin Farm. And then this, our trail and back to the office here, the Sap Boiler Trail is one of the little features along this long distance mountain bike trail.
So the access right now on this end, this where?
Would be here, on the north end, would be here.
Would be here.
Would be here. So you would go from here, well, Martin Farm.
Yeah.
So you could park here, you could park there. You would go up, you would go along the old power line on the other side of the river, and then up the Rochester Tunnel side of that trail. There's some new trail construction to switch back creation so they can get up, across Swansmill Trail, down to the end of 155A Flanders Extension next adjacent. It would probably come up right, right, right there somewhere. The exact spot, we don't know. It'll be up to the trail design, but somewhere in that vicinity, and then cross and come up the other side.
So Chris, so Bingo is like, Bingo Road is like halfway point roughly? Shortcut?
Not really halfway point. Halfway point would be somewhere kind of upward Swan, it says Swans. If you're, depends on what you're measuring from, Mason, you know?
You could park to do a shortcut, to cut down on your loop.
It's not a loop.
Well, it's not a loop, but you could create a situation where you could shorten the, the ride by parking at Bingo for a car shuttle.
You, I can't say that you couldn't do that.
Right.
But we're not putting any infrastructure at that location for parking or kiosk.
You don't have to. You don't have to, it's just that's the fact, it's halfway and...
Well, a lot of folks aren't gonna wanna do the whole thing, they're gonna do half the thing, and they'll organize to do calf rides and park at Bingo Road. I mean, it's the natural process. Let me just, let's get to Jason first.
Just to clarify the point I made in my comments, that appears on this map that that trail does cross Bingo Road at Flanders Hill.
Right at the bottom. I mean, it's proposed, I think in the description in the project, it talks about wanting to come down somewhere in the area where 155A is, where you and I walked up that day.
And so I'd have to endorse the point that's being discussed. There's a natural parking area there, and we know that people cluster there every day of the week. I don't know, you park at the kiosk, but Bruce and others park at Flanders Hill every day. And if that's a known crossing point for that trail, it's gonna be a trailhead, whether you call it a trailhead or not.
And I can't, I can't, I can't argue the point that some...
Well, my suggestion was, if you have flexibility, I personally would appreciate that you cross Bingo Road at your current kiosk, where you already have natural parking, where you're already using it to walk your dog, and avoid adding more people at Flanders Hill. That was my request. If you have flexibility, move it to the west.
I'm a little confused, Jason. At the current kiosk or just on the other side of the bridge?
Right.
But we still have to get across the bridge.
Well, they can walk, yeah, but for the parking is what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, all right. So, so, okay, I see what you're saying. So if they're, you're saying to actually designate parking there for that space? If people are going to congregate there, designate the parking for that crossing where the current kiosk is.
Correct.
Okay. I see what you're saying now. And I didn't, I didn't get that from your comment, so I'm glad we were able to clarify that. Can I go to Linda's?
Yeah, just two more questions. So what's the timeframe for when you think this is gonna get there?
Yeah.
And then how far off the road do you know approximately is the rest of that, you know, parallels Bingo Road?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Hundred feet, two hundred feet, fifty yards?
So this is conceptual. Okay, this, this drawing, the map is conceptual. No one's been out on the, they've kind of looked at the topographic map, looked at the connections, and said, okay, this is where we see it going. We've had a little bit of ground truthing of this, but for me to tell you that that would be exactly where? We have to say that it's going to be, like, you know, here versus being here or being there. I can't, I can't, I would be making something up right now if I were telling you, and I don't, and I don't wanna do that.
Fair enough, but the timeframe is like...
Timeframe is also not able to really define that because it relates to funding and fund, and some funding, some funding that would come through us, which would be, if that was the only timeframe we were relying on, I would say that we probably wouldn't have proposed it in the first place because funding for trails is on the decline from the, at the federal level. But because Vermont Huts and Vermont Mountain Bike Association are doing, they can do fundraising and they can put that money to federal, to trail construction on federal land, it would depend on their fundraising, their ability and where they're at. So it's probably, I'm just gonna guess, you know, you're talking about if the decision is signed next week and nobody objects and we get to a final decision by October, you probably wouldn't see any ground, new trail ground broken there for at least a couple of years.
Couple of years, yeah.
Is this coming out in the field at the end of 113? Is that where you, cause there is a remnant of a road that died out?
Yeah, this is following, I believe, that remnant of a road. I haven't walked this portion right here. I've been on a little bit of this and I've been on a little bit of this, but this portion, I think that is where it is coming out.
I mean, it just needs to be cleared. It's from, you know, all the hurricanes, the blowdowns, stuff, cheese are crossing.
Well, it would be, yeah, I mean, the trail would be...
The road is very obvious. So the concern is the field. The field is a kind of special place. You keep the trail on the side of the field?
It wouldn't go up the middle of the field. Is the field actually on federal land?
It's at, oh yeah, it's at the end of 113. It's a really neat field.
I think this is beyond that field, then.
You think it comes out after the field, across the...
I think that comes up into the forest because that field is right on the edge at the end of 113 where it goes from federal to private, private-federal boundary.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna see it come through that.
That's not where that, again, but I don't know exactly where it's going to go.
But you're familiar with the field.
I am familiar with the field, yes.
I need to see that thing, trampled by a light trail when you can avoid it.
Eric.
Well, Harlan looks like he's about to run out the door, so...
No, 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 I was just, I was just getting ready, I gotta use the map for my...
You see, he must have run out the door.
But I stepped on you once already, so...
All, in a sense, these are all still proposals because all the construction, the real construction and building is dependent on what the archaeologist says.
And the botanist, and the soil scientist, and...
So you still have a fair amount of examination before anything moves, or anything moves on the ground.
Right.
Yes?
There will be site-specific examination has yet to be conducted on the Vellamont Trail, yes, so... But, you know, the point, the point would be that it's not going to go suddenly from, you know, here to over here, or here to, oh, we're gonna actually connect up here, we're gonna, we're gonna propose like going through Jase's property and then, you know, running up and through. You know, it's going to say somewhere in this, you know, in, in the sphere of influence of that line, it's not gonna go, cause it's been truthed enough to know that the ground is suitable for that activity, but whether it's here or two hundred yards that way or three hundred yards that way is not yet known, but yes, arc, botany, soils, everybody would have to go and look at it.
And that one particular junction at the bridge and his drive...
Yep.
Has...
Lots.
Has a lot of stuff.
Yep.
Plus, there's, just below the cemetery, there's a site that was excavated by the Little Historical Society, it was a school there.
Right, yeah, I know the spot.
So, I mean...
Isn't there a whorehouse up there one time, too? It was up, Rochester's Whorehouse was up there at one point, too, right?
I was thinking about that, but then it was Harlan, it was Harlan's house. We'll go back and look.
That's what somebody told me the other day. I was like, really?
They used to sell whiskey out of my house to the guys coming down from the mill on Friday nights.
Oh, you're awesome.
My question is, is there any proposal for a spur anywhere between me and here?
No.
Coming down to Bingo Road?
For what purpose, Harlan?
Lady.
Like, no. No. It would be on there if it was.
No, he just confirmed, he wanted confirmation.
The reason I ask that is because if, then I would wanna, I'd wanna look at this map because these lines right here, these are proposed haul routes for timber management, so where are we gonna go? Are we gonna go down? So even with this one, this is that same spot we're talking about, Harlan, there's no proposed haul route that would connect Bingo Road up here.
A few hundred yards.
Yes, so...
That's about a ledge, yeah.
Well, there's a road that's cut in...
They'll be, we'll be hauling things, skidding things this way and then hauling things out the other way.
I was wondering about the proposed bike trail.
No, but you're seeing that line as, you're not seeing any connection, thank you.
I was talking with Bruce, and he was telling me that there was something coming down into the, you know, the plantation pine below my place?
Yep, yeah.
Just...
Just, just this, just this side of your place.
Where it washed out there, where the river's real close to the road, towards my place, there's an old skin trail that comes down, and he was saying that if they were coming down, they were gonna hook him.
There's no connection, the only connection you're seeing is, but the only touch of Bingo Road is back in this, this area here.
Okay, okay.
Well, I, so I have one last question about this. Do you have any control over this in terms of permitting? In other words, would they have to come to the Forest Service and say, we'd better ride, there'll be a hundred bikers coming through over the course of twelve hours on such and such a day? Do you have to get that request and approve it?
Depends. So there's, there's something called non-commercial group use. So if you have a group that's going to gather on the forest, even if you're not charging money and it's over seventy-five people, you need a non-commercial group use permit. For example, the Rainbow Gathering that's currently happening up at Texas Meadow, I got the Texas Meadow, non-commercial group use. They're not selling anything, but they need a permit, so they have to, well, Rainbow's a rock, different case.
But what's going on if you...
So, so they would need to come to us, apply for a permit, and we would either, we would have resource specialists and everyone can look at that and then determine whether there's gonna be some kind of adverse impact.
Okay.
If there was a business that said, you know, we're, we're going to do a race and we're gonna charge an entrance fee for the race, that would also require a permit.
So you have some measure of control over large grounds?
Yes.
This sounds like the tour to Rochester already.
And all six of us will ride.
We're gonna need two days.
An hour's age will be a shitload.
Yeah, I, I'm, just looking at the Vellamont article that was in Vermont Outdoors or whatever, that magazine that had it in it. I mean, they stated themselves that huge, huge demand for mountain biking, and this is why they wanna do this trail, and I, I think it's a really legitimate concern to think. I mean, if I was looking at that map, I would, I would definitely look at, okay, I can park here and do that part. So I, I just think that, I mean, I feel like the ski area on seventy-three was very underestimated, the demand and use there, and I'm very concerned that that will happen here, and then we will be talking about this after the fact, after it becomes a problem, rather than proactively looking at it and saying, really, how can we avoid that? Because I think there is a huge demand for mountain biking, and I would definitely look at that myself, at that map and say, yep, that's what I'm gonna do, cause I'm not gonna do that whole trail, but I could do that part and go back again and go out and back on that. But where are those people gonna, where are those people gonna park?
Yeah, so that, I mean, Jason, your point is well taken. We are going to actively, from Forest Service perspective, and we'll work with RASA to do the same, we're going to actually direct people to here.
You know, another one that I thought of, if it did become just, you know, much more popular than you imagined, was directing people to the CCC camp. Park there, ride up the road to it.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that's, I mean...
Where are you gonna direct them to?
Yeah.
The camp.
That would be, that might be a fall, that might be a fallback position.
Right.
Cause we really wanna, we really wanna get people here. This parking lot's gonna get reconfigured as part of this project, the two entrance, why Chittendenbrook is gonna get changed to one, the state wants them all changed to a single entry, which is gonna give us more space to provide parking at the end there for the winter use, cause that's a nightmare in the winter down there, and nobody, not a lot of people park there in the summer, but we'll have more capacity right here, and with the hut up the road, and there's gonna be a small little pod of single track kind of nested loop trail right at the campground, that's gonna draw people up to the campground. So we're gonna, whoopsie, you don't wanna read my email. We're gonna try to direct people here, but, you know, that's why I couldn't say that no one should come here, but we're gonna actively try to deter people from using this as a rally spot. But the idea of providing some limited parking there, that's kind of a double-edged sword almost. You know, is it better to say, there's no parking there? You know, when people come in, you know, you're not gonna, don't go to Bingo, that's not a good place to access the trail. Go, go over here to Chittendenbrook and provide no parking, or do you say, well, there's limited parking at Bingo Brook?
If they wanna do the loop, they can do the loops this way, go down to Bingo Road, right back up Bingo Road and back up seventy-three to Chittenden.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could do a loop. They're trying to, they're actively trying to avoid road rides.
Sure.
They don't wanna have to do, so we don't view this as a loop. This is like destination, from here, you know, to here, to the campground, to the next spot. It's not, we don't anticipate a lot of people going, oh, okay, a road from the Rochester Office to here and now I'm gonna ride back. You know, they're gonna, these kind of people are gonna keep going.
Yeah, so what's the vehicle? You gotta ride back.
These guys are hardcore. They don't do anything halfway.
So they're gonna turn around and go back to their car?
No, they're gonna stay at the Vellamont.
No, they're gonna stay at the hut and move on. The people who wanna ride, like, just ride and then come back, they're gonna be more drawn to the Sherburne Trails, to Blueberry Lake, to the Sap Boiler back here, to these other like pods of trails, like the Blueberry Lake Trails. They're gonna ride those and then go home. It's gonna be the hardcore people who do the Vellamont, they're gonna do Blueberry Lake, and then they're gonna ride down to the office here, and they're gonna do this, and then they're gonna ride down to the Sherburne Trails and do that, and ride to Pittsburgh.
Oh, it's just a picture here coming?
Could I ask a question behind here?
You may, yeah. I can't see the hands behind, so just throw something at me.
Um, so someone mentioned archaeologists, and I wondered what that's in reference to. I know I've walked up there with an obnaki person to look at the piles of.
Cairns.
Yep.
Cairns, are they, uh, is there, is that the issue, or, and what, or are there other remains?
I'll defer to Eric a little bit, but it's not cairns, it's the, in this area, what Eric was referring to, more historic sites, cellar holes,
Oh.
foundations, barns.
I don't know about the whorehouse, you might talk to him. But I could put my finger up in that map and show you lots of places.
Yeah.
And lots of places where that trail crosses, where they're taught where there's parking near, there, that hasn't been resolved, I don't think, at all.
So there, there's, this is a very historic, rich area from cellar holes, foundations, other, you know, post-colonization sites, you know, eighteen-hundred sites, some seventeen-hundred sites, right?
Yes, but the state historical preservation office has told the forest archaeologist, he is to do a section one oh six examination of every site.
Yeah, they are.
Now, if you have a site that's got ground disturbance, or if you have a project that's got ground disturbance nearby, that means he has to dig test it, he has to know what's in the ground.
Yeah, Eric, I mean, not Eric, Andrew is in close consultation with the state archaeologist on all this stuff, and they've, the current seasonal archaeologist Mallory, she has been out documenting all of the known and discovering some of the unknown sites, the stuff that you've been passing along.
No, I've been with Mallory and shown her what stuff.
So she's, we're, we're getting good documentation, much better than what we used to get, we used to have, you know, think of the days before we had GPS systems and things, you'd get a point on a map, and we all know that the archaeological site, we've learned the hard way in some cases, that it's not just at the point, it's bigger. So we're getting polygons now, which helps us a great deal.
I mean, any archaeological site has area.
Right.
Has space.
Yep.
And that was, that was the one large missing ingredient, I think, in documentation.
Right, and now we're getting that, which is, which is, which is great.
But I do want, if I can digress just a smidge from the general subject matter that I was with Mallory. We were up, must be, have been along the part of the road that goes to Swan's Mill, is that sixty-three?
Sixty-four, this right here.
Yeah. There was a site flagged by her, I mean, a polygon, no fly zones. Then after the establishment of that, of that no-fly zone, there's a flag line running through it. So why is there a flag line running through it?
Can you tell me where that is, so we can resolve that?
Yeah, I'm sort of a lastr, you want me to point it out right now?
Well, it'd be better if you could send me an email and give me some information where it is, and I'll pass that along. I don't know what the flag, what the flag line.
Yeah, well, I, I talked to Andrew, and his response is, oh, well, it's temporary. I said, it'll be temporary until it becomes permanent.
It's temporary till it's not, so that's why I wanna, I wanna know.
No, temporary till it's not, what comes after the flagging, paint usually.
So that, that's what I wanna find out, where that is and what the flag line is actually indicating. Okay, thank you, Eric, if you find more of that, please let me know, the sooner the better, when you find it. I think we've exhausted the Bingo area from recreation special uses, I can't think of any other special use. So the Philadel, okay, so the only other thing related to this is the Philadelphia Peak Comsite coming out of the wilderness. This isn't gonna happen tomorrow, because what it says in the proposed decision is that, you know, once we establish two additional repeaters, one on Corporation Mountain and one up back here on the Braintree Range, we'll remove the Philadelphia repeater, but that's going to require funding to do that. So we have, we'll have a decision to remove this, and the portion of the wilderness, the portion of the removal site that's in the wilderness, like the repeater site itself and the road down to here, will be using stock animals and people power to get it out. Once it reaches here, we've, we've left the option open that we might use a UTV, we might continue to just use stock animals to bring it down to the end of the road, and then the staging site is actually the gravel pit on Thresher Hill. We're not gonna park into a whole lot of equipment up at the end of the road, because there's a lot of archaeological features right there, and we just don't wanna like have stock animals wandering around, or some truck backing into something, so.
Who owns the repeater?
The government owns the repeater.
The government.
Someone or whether.
No removal, we haven't specified, it would be probably, we would be looking for a dry, non-frozen ground situation.
Oh, you want a non-frozen ground here?
It's safer for the stock animals to do it.
Sure.
So we'd be looking at, you know, the dry part of the year, which is, like, right now, right now. And that, the reason we're doing that is that we've gone through a minimum, what's called a minimum requirements analysis. Anytime you do anything in wilderness, you have to go through a minimum requirements analysis, it tells you what the, it analyzes what kind of impacts various techniques to do something wilderness would have. So, like, taking it out with people, flying it out with a helicopter, we can get authorization to do that, on a one-time occurrence, using stock animals, and in this case, we determined that using stock animals was probably the best from wilderness and wouldn't break the backs of many people carrying all that stuff out. Cause that's a non, non-conforming tool in wilderness, so we can get an exemption, but it was felt at the end of the day that we could comply with the Wilderness Act and use stock animals, because the distance isn't all that great. If we were talking about up somewhere in the middle of the wilderness, it would have been miles and miles and miles to get out the helicopter, it would probably risen further to the top.
If they get the funding, you know, and things work out favorably from the remaining examination, and it stays close to target path, would you wait until all the logging activities are complete and skidding, logging trucks are done, before you open the trail? Or would you allow the trail to open in the middle of that logging activity?
Yeah, you're, you're hitting on something that's an internal struggle for us at times, is trying to sequence plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So what will happen once the decision gets signed and we know what's approved, is we're gonna develop an implementation plan internally, and that'll set forth, like, when are we gonna harvest timber here, when are we gonna harvest timber over there, when are we gonna do? Some of it will be a shot in the dark, like, when are we gonna remove the repeater, you know, we'll try to establish a target date for that. My, that's, you know, I will look to my timber and recreation staff to have that discussion. My gut would tell me, and my inclination would be that, yes, you would wanna wait until you've finished harvesting timber, because why would you wanna put a bunch of infrastructure in and then potentially damage that infrastructure with skidding and footline of trees, only to then have to put it back in again, so.
I was thinking more of running over bikers.
Yeah, you don't want public in there.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I mean, they, they don't stop, they, they just all thick.
I almost got ran over the other day with two, two mountain bikes, just walking up my road.
Wasn't me, was it?
No, no, but I was a little shocked by the speed of the bicycles.
Was it Susan?
But they're fully helmeted, ready to.
I have the feeling Susan's gonna rip it down that hill, and now I'm gonna keep my.
I'm not helmeted.
It's a hill.
They were.
Yes, right, that's right.
So now I gotta wear a helmet to walk to my house.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, if you fall, you won't crack it.
I just have a question, my concern is the Flanders Cemetery, and maybe you talked about that earlier, that came a little late. How are you protecting that?
Right there, we have, there's no recreation activity planned anywhere near the Bingo Cemetery.
But the road down below, though, right, I mean, the Flanders Way.
We're not, no, the road that goes right by it is Flanders Road, the town road, Flanders Hill Road, we don't have any activity planned on Flanders Hill Road.
Okay, but.
From, from recreation, I'm gonna look from a timber perspective.
But down below.
You're gonna do some logging each side of it.
Uh, no, so, let me zoom in way in on this one, so we can really get a look at it. Not very much, down to your right, eliminated it. Okay, so you'll see, here's the, here's, this is the cemetery right here.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So there's no activity directly adjacent to the cemetery, it's buffered by this green, it's just gonna remain forest as it is now. This is the road, so we will haul down the road to harvest this unit right here, and the wood that comes out of here, and the wood that comes out of here, there'll be a landing that's a pre-existing landing on that road. Jason, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Not existing anymore, but, yeah.
But it was, it was a landing at one point.
Yeah.
So that'll be reopened up, and that'll be the landing, so all this little bit of wood that's coming out of here is gonna go to this landing and be hauled out right there. So it's a pretty small amount of wood to be going by the cemetery, and that'll be, that'll be quick, that won't take them very long to harvest.
Chris, are the heavy red lines, logging access, roads of some sort?
These lines right here.
Like rated H, H two six.
This, we see this H seven, H eight, H six, these are harvest unit boundaries. So when we plan timber harvests, we, we, there's, there's compartments and stands, like compartment ten, stand two fifty-eight, compartment ten, stand two fifty-five, I know you know this button, but, so on and so forth. And then we bundle them into these harvest units, so that our resource specialists, when they're looking at that area, cause as you can see, all of the activity, the haul, hauling, landings aren't necessarily within compartments, within those stands, there's activity outside of the stands, so the resource specialists know that, okay, when I need to look at Harvest Zone Six, I need to look at the area within the boundary of that Harvest Zone. So like, the botanist would not just walk through here, she would also take a walk out, out, out here in the green, just to make sure that there wasn't some resource of concern out there, archaeologists do the same thing.
And that light green is, I mean.
This is just a, no harvest activity planned.
And the dark green is?
The dark green is, the dark green is a thinning.
And the purple?
Purple, the purple, the dark purple is group selection. So that's what, that's what's proposed behind your house, Harland, that's where they create these quarter acre, half acre, one acre openings, scattered across the landscape with mature forest in between them.
What's the view shed?
View shed.
I know, I know, it's just a.
Oh, you're looking at a document.
I read it somewhere.
Yeah, so in some places, up along the long trail, we're creating view sheds, so we'll create just a little log opening where there's an opportunity to get a view out of the valley. Those are clear cuts.
And red, the, the blue is.
Red, there is no red up here, oh, red.
Just to the northeast, the blue. C A S five forty-nine.
The dark brown.
Oh, that's openings, that's create, or, no, you only point to, you know, make sure I get it, this right here?
Yeah.
That's, that's either create or expand an existing opening. So that's, there'll be a permanent opening, permanent wildlife opening. I can't think right off the top of my head, is there an opening up there, Jason, on that side of the road?
It's all grown in animal, yeah.
Was there one at one time?
When they were logging it, when, I think it was Forest Johnson.
That might've, that might've been one of the ones that we were talking about before, that we used to maintain, and we've let go for many years.
There's a cellar hole, there's a cellar hole there too.
Yeah.
So it's an archaeology, it's an archaeology site.
Yeah, so it's old, so we might be trying to reclaim what was the old pasture around that arch site. So what you're not seeing is, we do have a data layer that shows where all the archaeological sites are, where all the rare plant sites are, where all the features of concern are, this is just what goes up to.
We'd like to see that map.
For review. But I have to go through a security clearance process to be able to see that. Playing in the record for you guys, some of the areas, leaving a certain, on the Snack Breaker.
Okay, so that is, if that's there, then it's a lot of here somewhere.
Well, there are several other sites up there. Yeah, not many, Eric would know better than I would. How many, how many, like seventeen-hundred sites there might be in this project area? I know I've seen a couple.
You mean the higher Bingo, or in the Harvest Zones, or?
Just, just in general in Ro, this, this project area, I mean, I know I've seen some center chimneys.
In the area that they're now designating as Harvest Zones, which is sort of, you're seeing just the edge of it, because actually it extends further, what, northeast from that, yes. That probably, I mean, the number overall is small, but that probably is close to eighty percent of the number, the total eighteenth-century sites in Europe, in the forest. In the, in the Bingo area.
There's a high percentage of the forest eighteenth-century sites in the Bingo areas, are they saying?
Yes.
Is that from the west hill?
This is, this is not.
West Hill too, is that?
High diversity.
It's not even.
Those are later guys.
Not yet, from a, from a rich perspective, like. Questions? Harland?
Where are your landings?
The landings, so I'm gonna, see these little green stars?
Yeah.
These are the proposed landing sites, some of these are exist, many of these are actually existing, they may not look like it today, cause they have trees growing on them, but they were once log landings. And that's also true of, like, these road, these haul roads, most of these are roads. You know, if you were walking in the woods, you would say, whether it's designated as a road or not designated as a road, it was a road at one point. Were heavily roded, small R, so, but these are the landings, all these. And how much, how much timber will go to that landing, kind of depends on the treatment type, and then how much volume is in there.
What, what are we talking for chipper?
They might, they might have a chip van into the landing, that's, that's really up to the contractor, we don't specify what they do with the, with the pulp wood that they take off. Some of it'll go firewood, some of it'll get chipped, some of it'll go to other uses.
Do you allow the rest of firewood on site, looking at three landings?
Typically don't process firewood, they'll send it to a processor.
Two hundred horsepower, you know, you can pick up something the size of this building and drop it, you know, I'm just kinda wondering.
Yeah, they, I mean, I, I can't, I would assume that they would be operating chipperies, that some of the sites, I don't know which sites. We wouldn't know that, even be able to wave a flag at that until, you know, the site got contracted.
It'd just be.
And you can talk, you can then talk to them about, you know, what do you think you're gonna, you do this for?
I was just kinda concerned with the noise thing for months on end.
They typically would concentrate the chipping into a shorter period of time, cause it costs them money to keep the chipper hot site.
And then run the chip for like a day a week or so. And they can dump a load of chip plates on the way out.
Back here again, so will a fair amount of trucks be coming down what you call sixty-four? Is that Wing Farm?
Wing Farm Road. So if we, it's so funny, the colors up on the screen are not at all, the colors on the left here. So, let me zoom out one more step.
Yeah.
So all of. This, these harvest areas will be coming either down Wing Farm Road or down Maple Hill Road. There's the cul, that old stone culvert right here, on the piece of the Hancock Town Road, it goes, loops around. It shows that this is a haul road, we're not hauling over that culvert, we're not driving over that culvert, that's one of the restrictions that will be in the contract. No fielder can support the weight. So, some of this wood, which will come down to here, will go out on Maple Hill Road, but the majority of this up in here will come down Wing Farm Road. If you estimate the number of trucks, it'd be very hard, because that would just depend on what the volume is in those stands. But there, yes, there will be truck traffic up and down that road.
And the purple area is clear-cutting?
Purple areas. Group selection. That would be a really big clear-cut area.
It pretty much gets rid of all the old pine?
I'm sorry.
All that plantation pine and all this?
We're, we're working to get rid of the non-native plantation pine.
Yeah.
In Norway spruce.
Now, is that something they're gonna take off for logs, or they're gonna chip all that crap?
Uh, they will take it for logs.
Okay.
That, that darker purple is group selections, so that's that little, little openings in mature forest.
Chris, could you clarify what the thinning, what they do in the thinning areas?
A thinning is that they will go in and they'll take, what they're trying to do is release some of the larger trees. So they're gonna go in and they're gonna take lesser formed, more poorly-formed trees to try to release the trees that have better form and allow them to continue to grow, they're gonna go into things that you, we would look at, we say, wow, that's crowded in there. You know, none of the trees are being able to get a good crown development on them, so they'll go in and they'll remove some of the more poorly-formed trees to allow the bigger trees to.
To the seminary shop.
Making sure that will be pult, you're saying?
In those stands, it might be, yes, but it could be firewood, it could be something else, it would be pulp, it would be pulp wood, yes, but what they do with that, it would be hard to say.
So it'd still be like logging trucks going in, or?
Yeah, you'd still have logging trucks going into those units, cause they'll take that wood out.
So in a thinning area, would you look at it and not necessarily be able to tell that they've done it, or you would say, oh, yeah, they've definitely cut there?
You can tell.
You, you can tell, you would be able to tell, it wouldn't be like, like, some areas are proposed for shelter woods, like various stages of shelter woods, and that's where they go in and they remove most of the. of shelter woods, and that's where they go in and they remove most of the basal area that's in there, but they leave the best formed trees and the biggest trees behind to act as seed trees for the, for the remainder of the area. And then you'll wait ten, fifteen years and then go back in and remove those as the regenerating forest has reached a certain age. So those are the ones that you look at and you go, wow, why are there, it's just like, looks like a park out there. That's a shelter wood. But thinning, you can tell that they've done something, but it's still, it's, it looks like a mature forest.
And, and is the, is it, do they do that in the wintertime?
So there's a mix of harvest seasons in here. Most of these harvests are winter harvest. Most of the ground is winter ground. We are trying to do more summer harvesting for a variety of reasons. Silviculturally, we can achieve better results if we get some ground scarification, yellow birch, sugar maple. Some of our more desirable trees like to have the ground scratched up a little bit. Gives them a good seed bed. If you ever walked down an old logging road, they're usually thick with like hemlock or yellow birch or something like that. That's because it's been scratched up a lot. They love that as a seed bed. It also keeps, the operators love to have summer season because they're real busy in the winter and they often fall into a lull in the summer because there's a lot of winter harvesting that goes on. But we just don't, our soils and the ground condition, it really depends on how much rain we get, you know, over the course of the summer, whether the ground will stay dry enough for us to be able to harvest in summer. So some units are absolutely winter, some units are, the majority of units are probably absolutely winter harvest. There are some units that are, yep, they're okay for summer harvest. And then there's a middle ground of units and it's displayed, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the document. There's a ray in the middle that like, well, winter harvest, but if conditions are right, there's an opportunity for summer harvest.
So you will be plowing and traveling over that road during this one or two years past the Harland's house for...
We won't, but the contractor will, yes.
That's what I mean.
That's scheduled for winter, for winter harvest?
So that means, yeah.
Some of it is, Harland, absolutely.
Alright, so the cross-country skiing won't be so good for those couple of years?
No, it won't be, yeah.
How to get up there?
So we'll, we, we have the ability to, in the contract, come to terms with the contractor. We can also specify to the contractor in certain situations that they can only plow to a certain depth. So there's still remains snow packed on the road, but it would be, it would be hard packed, it would be hotter. If the road is wide enough sometimes, you can share the road with them. I don't think that road is probably wide enough.
I mean, the reality is, the reality is it'll be compromised for a couple of years while it's going on. Unless, unless you go up there and groom it.
Right. The one thing that I have said and I've been, been working in the document and working with the timber staff here is that in the sequence of harvesting units, to not have harvesting going on in Bingo and harvesting going on in the Chittenden Brook Nordic system at the same time. That there would always be one of those Nordic systems available for people to ski on. So if you're displaced from Bingo, you can go over to Chittenden Brook and vice versa. It's not a perfect solution, but it's...
It's the best you can do?
Best I can do.
So you're gonna maintain your emphasis on keeping that a cross-country ski trail?
Pine Brook?
Pine Brook.
In the winter, yes. In the summer, it's mountain bikes and more.
Beyond my place.
Yes. I'll say it emphatically again, for those of you who might be in the back of your minds, there is no motorized proposal in Bingo.
Can there be a sign at the end of the road that says that? We spoke about this before and I was...
I mean, we, if we put, if we, if we sign things like the camping and things like that, our kiosks say that. When we put kiosks in, that's one of the things that goes out and we can emphasize that, yeah. Yep. Jeanette, you have your hand up.
Could you go through the different shelter wood thinning and, and put a percent on those? That in thinning, we remove forty percent of the trees or put some percents on the different areas?
Off the top of your head?
Yeah, I'm not sure I can do that off the top of my head.
It's in the appendix of the environmental association, appendix A one.
It doesn't do the percent though, but you could...
Gives you a range.
What do you, what do you, wait, let me just, what do you ask me? Like, in a shelter, what's the percentage of, in a shelter wood, what's the percentage of trees removed? Or are you asking me what percentage of the overall harvest is shelter wood?
No, in, in, in a designation like shelter wood.
Yeah.
What percentage of the trees are removed?
Yeah, I, I can't...
Fifty, eighty?
I can't do that off the top. And it also depends because there's different various types of shelter woods. There's different thinnings. Group selection would depend on how many groups you're putting in would be the percentage. I could like scale you up as far as the least number of trees removed would be like a single tree selection. And then you would go up to a, a group selection probably would be the next one. So you're removing the least amount of trees. And then a thinning after that, and then a shelter wood after that, and then a clear cut after that. So clear cut would be the one that would obviously remove the most amount of trees, right? But for me to sit here and be able to rattle that off and be able to stand behind it without digging in and asking my timber staff, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that. Some of the information...
Some of the information you're asking is in the appendix A one. Charles, our forest, you put a lot of time and effort to try to explain exactly what these treatments entail on the ground. He doesn't talk about in terms of what your, what your forest percentage of tree plant there, harvested or number of trees, but it, it talks about it in terms of basal area, which is the amount of space that's occupied by the actual stem of the tree over an acre basis. So you can sort of get an idea. It's, it's at the beginning of age number. It's, it's the entire appendix A one. So like page A one dash one talks about uneven age management. It starts talking about group selection right there.
Just when you Google up shelter wood and look at images, they, they vary vastly from, you know, a single tree left to something looking more like, you know...
And that, and that depends on what basal area you're reducing that stand to.
Right. And it says right here that the group selections would remove trees in a smaller area that varies sizes from one tenth of an acre to up to three acres. So it just gives you a range right there for a group, for a group harvest.
A group harvest is like a, like a mini clear cut, like all the trees are removed in that, it's on a circle, I keep making it circle shaped, but they're not circles, they're different.
So you end up with like a checkerboard?
If you were looking at it from above, it would look like an irregular checkerboard. They're not spaced on that kind of regularity, but you would see openings scattered across the landscape, little ones.
Is that, that's wildwood more than...
Yeah, yeah.
More than...
Yeah. Because they want like that young forest and then the mature forest.
Right, but it's also, it's also objective silviculturally because it favors trees that are intolerant to the sun. So species that rather shade, they grow better in those smaller sizes.
Somebody back there, Chris?
Yeah. Susan, go ahead.
I, I had already raised it with a select board about changing the, seeing if we can change the speed limit on Bingo, but I want to know if, as far as the, the forest service, do you have any say in your contractor saying, hey, we really, you need to go slow? I mean, I've asked the town if there's any way we can get it reduced to twenty-five miles per hour, but I wanted to know if there's anything you as a forest service can do with your logging contractors to...
When, when they're on the town road, they have to abide by the town's speed limits. We can certainly request that they go slower.
Yeah.
For various reasons. You know, I'll, I'll tell you this, if you're driving a sixty thousand pound log truck on an icy road, you're not gonna want to be flying along.
Okay.
You're gonna be creeping along. Now, that's not to say that a sixty pound log truck doing twenty, sixty thousand pound log truck doing twenty-five miles an hour isn't an opposing sight coming your way, but it's, you know, they're not gonna be ripping down the road at fifty miles an hour, empty or full.
There's not enough room in many of those places, two cars to pass, one of them is a logging truck. So they gotta radio back and forth and hold the...
They'll, they'll be, they'll have to be responsible for, they're responsible for traffic control and to keep the road open and safe to the public. It's written into their contract. And we have one staff physician here solely dedicated to interacting with timber contractors. He's a sale administrator and that's what he does. So he'll be out there every day, working with the people coming out there.
The winter time is not gonna be too much of an issue if you're out there on the weekends.
We can also do, Jay, I don't remember the, the weekend hauling thing, that's, that's in the mitigation still, right? So we did put a mitigation measure in place. Jay's gonna double check for me here, that disallow, doesn't allow weekend hauling. So they can't haul timber on the weekdays.
Sure, well, that's great.
They can go up and cut timber on the weekends. So they can go up and skate and do everything, but they can't haul down the road on the weekends.
Well, that would be, that's wise.
I think so. It was in there. Alright, so Mason, on the weekends.
Yes, can you explain reasonable access for landlocked parcels and how that all works in all this?
So there's, there's no, we don't have any action in here granting access to, in Bingo anyways, anybody who's landlocked. There are some special use proposals for access for people of the Hancock Tunnel, but there's nothing in Bingo. And they, I can explain the process to you. If a, if a landholder is surrounded by or largely surrounded by federal ownership, we're required by the Inoka, the Alaska Native Lands Interest Act, I think I got my acronym and some letters mixed up there, but you know what I mean, to provide access to that landowner, to their property. Because we can't, we can't reduce the value of their property by saying, no, you don't have access. So that has to be, it has to be reasonable access. Reasonable access is determined on a case-by-case basis. Depends on what, what's there. If you have a property with no structure on it, reasonable access might be then you get to hike. You know, we'll provide you a trail access or if you, you know, it, it just, it runs the gamut. And you don't have to be completely surrounded by national forests. You just have to demonstrate that it would be a hardship for you to gain access in, by any other means.
So it's a, a piece that's been sold at in full knowledge ahead of time, understood in the forest service, reasonable access defined as what, reasonable access is to be four seasons, three seasons? What's reasonable?
Well, you can't deny someone access to their property in any season. It depends on the, the use of the property. That's a case-by-case basis. You're asking me, you're asking for a specific answer to the general question. I can't get to that.
Access by walking?
Can't be. Can be accessed by car, can be accessed by snowmobile, can be accessed by ATV. It all depends on case-by-case basis.
So we have a locked gate on sixty-two for one season, for one of the four seasons? Is that within the reasonable access?
Mason, I'm not gonna comment on something that relates to the lawsuit that's currently going on between you and the town.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So you can try to bait me into it, but it's not gonna work.
I'm not beating you, I'm just looking for, to understand reasonable access.
Yeah.
You know, this is the place to come.
We've had, we've had this conversation before too, so, but I'm not gonna comment on something that's gonna, that relates to that lawsuit.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
But basically, you don't allow snowmobiling in national forests, basically?
No. We do allow snowmobiling on the national forests on designated snowmobile trails.
Right, right, yeah. Of which there are none in Bingo.
Of which there are none in Bingo Basin and none proposed and there never will be any designated public snowmobile trail in there because if you look at the context of the landscape with it being the Batel Wilderness Horseshoe around it, there's nowhere to go. So it would be an out and back trail. And one of the things that we look at very closely is trail connections. There's just nowhere to go. And there's no snowmobile club in the state that's gonna propose a three mile dead end snowmobile trail. Especially with the way that conditions are going lately in the winter, they're kind of shrinking their systems down to a core as opposed to blowing them up.
We come back around to the seasonal restriction on hauling, because you asked. The hauling activities impacting snowmobile and ski trail shall not take place on weekends or further holidays, unless snow conditions do not allow snowmobile or skiing to occur. So we're talking about Bingo.
Bottom part of Bingo Road they could haul out on. They wouldn't be able to haul out past Harland's place on the weekend because that's a, that's a cross-country.
Because there was no snow.
That's not gonna work anyway because there are landings. Well, I guess there are a couple of landings on that road, but there's not much.
Yeah, this, and that.
Eric?
One, I guess then Bingo, or at least past the Four Corners, or actually, is not actually a designated cross-country ski trail, is it?
No, but the Bingo Road between Harland's and the Four Corners is...
Is it?
Yes, because it's the Pine Brook Loop Trail.
Oh, that's part of the loop.
So, so there would be a restriction in place on that section of the trail which would prevent you from hauling from beyond there, past there.
Oh, that's okay. I have another question, but I forgot it, so don't worry.
So we'll quote you on that.
You'll see.
Getting close to that.
Eric forgot his second question?
The weekends are free of logging trucks past Harland's.
Yeah, by that mitigation measure, they would not be able to haul down that section.
If there's snow.
They can haul to right to the end of it, I guess.
If there's snow.
I see, was there a question in the back?
Right, yeah, just to be clear though, if there's snow, that wouldn't have...
Yeah.
Although, so I don't care. It's still winter. Well, that's true.
But it's related to snow.
I understand.
Yeah. Jeanette? I see over here, I'm gonna get to...
Glyphosate.
Glyphosate?
Yeah.
Yes.
What kind of quantities over what size areas are you proposing?
Okay, so that is all contained in there. For me, I don't, I wouldn't be able to rattle it off off the top of my head. I mean, I could read you what's written in the document, but for me to do that off the top of my head, I, I don't know.
There's stuff up there that you need to use glyphosate on.
There is, well, there's elm planting going on on the White River. Jay's gonna look, look up and be able to get me some.
But I mean, the classical invasive honeysuckle barberry.
No, no, that's, that's, so, so invasive plant control, which we do use glyphosate for and other herbicides, is handled under a different decision. It's a forest-wide programmatic decision. So we don't have to reanalyze it and make that decision again in this document. That decision already exists. And so that, for invasive plant control, that is in place already. What's being proposed in here are, is, one was to control vegetation around the elm planting sites. We're planting elms along the White River, trying to restore some elms into the riparian areas. Is to treat the competing vegetation. That's one of the things. And there was also another, Charles wanted to keep it as an option to apply it for site preparation anywhere he would be conducting natural or artificial regeneration harvest methods. So that basically covers anywhere where there's shelter, shelter wood, clear cut seed tree and group selection. So everything minus the thing. That would be the maximum area. Now, keep in mind that he's not planning to do that on every single acre. He, he would be specific to the areas where he felt like it would be needed. The intent is that it's to control beach regeneration. So it would be, it would be subject to the amount of beach that would be within those areas that, that are being harvested. But he doesn't know where that is until after the fact. And so he left it open to be able to use it potentially in any of those stands. That's the way it's written right now.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm just, the one page I'm looking at here, you know, four thousand three hundred and eighty-three acres.
Right. But that's contingent on any number of other things restricting that activity. So if, if beach is not a problem in those stands, and it, it would no way, in no way be a problem in every one of those stands. And I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I'm saying it becomes a problem that's outcompeting the desired regeneration in sugar maple, spruce, yellowbirds, whatever, whatever the desire is, to a point where, okay, we need to do something here, otherwise we're going to get a bunch of diseased beach back. That would be a place. There's also restrictions on it from within that acreage that would be restricted by the botanist, from a plant's perspective, the soil scientist, wetlands, all kinds of other things that would come into play that would shrink that acreage down, 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 down. So it's not, it would never be applied to all 4,000 acres. Might not be applied to one, for all we know. At this point, it's an option for treatment to control beach.
An option that's looking to authorization?
Yes, yes. Yep.
So it would be less than authorization for 4,000-plus acres of application?
Yep. Within the, within the mitigation measures that are contained in the project, it has to abide by the mitigations that are written for glyphosate application and all other activities, so.
And that can't be done in the winter. It's going to be 45 degrees or something.
And it can't rain.
I have a question.
It's hard to apply it. I mean, following all the rules.
That's right, which usually apply not following.
So this is, this is also site prep. So don't, the other thing that you can't think about is, or you can. Don't think about this as a broadcast activity. This is a target-specific activity, like that beech tree. We want to kill that beech tree and that little beech sprout, and that little beech sprout. It's not, you're not spraying over the entire area. It's a targeted application. So again, it's not going to hit all 4,000 acres with that target. It's not like you're putting, potentially putting glyphosate on 4,000 acres of ground.
And what's the radius after you shoot one spot?
What's the radius?
Yeah, it travels.
It's target-specific. It travels to where you shoot, to into that plant.
The ejacating in the plant.
It's, what?
Soil or...
Is it, it's cut stump, right, Jay?
Yeah.
Stump treating?
So you're, you're cutting the stump and you're spraying the exposed, the fully, the little exposed stuff?
It is not foliar spray. There's a couple of things to point out, because it does sound alarming. It does sound alarming to applying herbicide on a large acre like this. So it's, it's a glyphosate product, yes. It's not Roundup. It's a, it's a water-based, it's labeled to use near water. So it's water, it's, it's got a special added type of restriction as far as the type and impact that it could have on water. It's rodeo. It's rodeo.
Okay, yeah, rodeo is approved for water.
So the other thing about it too is that the amount of the application rate would be much more restrictive closer to the surface waters, factors around surface waters. And so it's worth pointing that out. And then the fact that it's not foliar spraying, it is cut stump treated. So thus, those particular products do not need to have surfactants added to them like foliar spraying does. And it's the surfactants that tend to be toxic in glyphosate itself. So those are things that are spelled out in the discussion analysis. And so there's mitigation measures in Appendix Beta to talk about those restrictions. Except for the elm.
Except for the elm planting. It would be foliar spraying. It's trying to kill the tolering.
But regardless of fact, it's the mitigation is really maximum. So that it doesn't spread, breaks up right away, doesn't bind.
I'm a little concerned that the, there are definitional issues here when you refer to the toxicity of something. Glyphosate being, you know, in the headlines as carcinogens, major lawsuits being won or lost, depending on whose side you are. That Monsanto is known for decades of the carcinogenic effects of that product. Why it's not just, you know, banned across the board at this point, you know, is a question, let alone...
So the product that is, that is being litigated and the lawsuits are around is Roundup, which is a Monsanto product. It has glyphosate in it. The carcinogen, the, 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 the issue at the lawsuit is the surfactant that they're adding into it. Not necessarily the glyphosate. It is the surfactant that is highly toxic that they've been using. So these products that we're talking about, aquatic glyphocates, don't have that surfactant. They don't have any surfactant in them because there's no need to stick to a leaf, which is what the surfactant does, if it's a sticker.
So basically, you can apply it up to a day harvest?
I would have to read the label on that, Harland. Harvest of what are you talking about? A tree, sure. A tomato? You wouldn't, you wouldn't use it on a tomato because it's in a...
I just, you know. I mean, if you can eat it, it's probably safe.
Safe to kill rats.
Just saying, just saying.
It doesn't kill rats.
You know, Roundup was safe at one time, you know?
No, it wasn't. They just made you think it was.
You had a question?
Mr. Word Elm, I think. You're gonna plant elms a lot, don't you?
Yes.
Dutch elm diseases, not a...
These are, these are disease-resistant elms that they have developed. We're doing it in partnership with the Nature Conservancy.
Trial run?
It's actually more than a trial. They, they know that these elms are disease-resistant in plantations. And they're just starting to scatter them around. And they've done them out in the wild too on a limited basis, and they've done very well. And so now they want them to plant them in a little bit more concentration than they have in the past out in a wild setting, so.
But you're spraying the foliage?
We're spraying the competing because we're planting them.
You're spraying with the foliage, with the surfactant?
No, the same, the same, the same, the same substance. We're not, we're, you're, we're adding a surfactant, a non-toxic surfactant to this. Non-toxic varieties of surfactant. I shouldn't say non-toxic. Nothing is non-toxic. Even water is toxic at some dose. So a, a less toxic surfactant to the mix to allow it to stick to the vegetation there. And we're talking about, those are spraying an area like that big around, around where the, where the elms are planted. Mason?
Yeah, a different subject, or micro, on the landings near Harland's up there.
Yep.
Yeah. So what will the road look like when you're all done? Because right now it's often part of the ski, it was part of the recreational use. So will it be returned to its current way it looks, or?
That's your question. So landings, just in general?
No, no. Turn around, over the bridge, up the hill, we're gonna have truck traffic going to land. And what will the road look like when all this is over?
Okay, hold on.
I guess it's password.
11111, you know what password is? So, I gotta move down this way. So yeah, so truck traffic will be on that little section of the road right there. This wood right here is going to be pulled out this way. So there is no road, I mean, there's this little section of road, so it will look essentially like it does today.
You're gonna be turning it to what it looks like today?
Well, it won't be grown in with grass right after it's used, but it will grow in with grass after it's...
You're not gonna need to rebuild it to get that machines up there? I mean, you're gonna have to do something to, to, to use it because it's not usable for heavy trucks right now.
We'll have to improve the road so that a truck can go on it.
So you're gonna defroo it after you're done?
It'll be graded, water bars put in, turned up a little bit, seeded, and let go to nature.
It will not be what it is now. It will definitely be improved. And that's a town road or not a town road? It's the old Bingo Road.
Not a town road.
It's the old Bingo Road.
Not, not, that section is not a town road. So you're talking about this little piece right here, this right here, right?
Through the bridge?
After the bridge.
Through the bridge? And the mailbox is...
So the road, the pine, this is Pine Brook Trail right here. So you're talking about this section of road will look, right after it will look like a road. Three years after it will look like a grassy field. And 10 years after it will look like a bunch of saplings.
No, I'm talking about the actual driving surface.
That's what I'm talking about too.
You're not gonna be across the bridge?
Mason, when, when, when we're doing the harvesting, it will look like a road. It'll be cleared, it'll be graded, it'll be colored.
No, I drive on it.
That road will look exactly like it does now.
With all that heavy equipment?
I mean, if you create...
The question that you currently drive on up to your house?
Yeah.
Yes, will look just like it does now.
So if you run it, you'll grade it?
Yeah. It's in the contract, they have to restore it.
After the operation, usually.
I thought you meant beyond, like where the Brook Trail splits on. No, that road will look just like it does now.
But it has to be improved to that type of truck track.
It's, it's already to a standard to support that type of truck. That bridge is built to...
I'm not talking about the bridge, I'm talking about the hill after the bridge.
Yeah, no, that's...
It's gonna be torn up.
They will grade it and restore it to its current condition.
They're gonna keep it in driving condition while they're doing their work.
Yes, they have to get it to access to their home.
It'll look the way it does now.
Motion to adjourn. Doing that kind of meeting?
So, I'm looking at this landing right here. Basically, it's my, my, my trail. So that would be down pretty much, well, towards a sand pit, right? Where that road comes down then? Up on the left, up on the left of the road.
That's an existing landing right there. So if you went there, you, it's gonna look like a, like...
And then there's a sand pit probably right here.
Yeah, that's, that's probably that dock itself.
Okay, so both of these landings, they're like down the road from where you go up to the basis case?
Yeah, they're past that, they're past the fort.
Couple hundred yards, yeah.
So you go up and then Mason goes this way and the Pine Brook Trail goes this way, they're down this way.
On the uphill side. And you're gonna bring all the equipment down over the ridge? I know, I'm just thinking that it's gonna take some serious roadwork to have that type of equipment.
They'll, they will make whatever improvements is necessary. If they feel that road is not to a standard, they'll make the improvements to the road. And then they'll restore it to the condition, they'll probably leave it better than it is now.
Well, that's the question mark. Who thinks it's better? Because I like it the way it is now.
Okay.
So what you consider, or somebody considered better, might be a class-three road that I'm not interested in.
Sorry, Chris, I'm not gonna stay till nine, you're on your own.
Kevin?
Same here. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else last but the judge?
Suck it in.
You mentioned that most of these landing zones were existing?
Most of the, I don't know what the percentage is, but they do.
I know in this, it mentions speedy landings, be new, it's fresh.
Okay.
So there's...
There are new, yeah, there are new landings to be constructed. How many landings on a total?
Is that in addition to the old ones? Because it doesn't appear to be over the E of them on your map.
Well, you're just looking at one. We're looking at, we're looking at only like a third. If I zoom out to the complete extent of this map, we're only looking at about a third. Of the project area. Is there a total number of landings listed in there? It must be somewhere. Jason, he's the data guy tonight.
Because that's 40 acres of clearcut right there, being even a landing zone.
Yeah, there would be definitely there.
Yeah, Chris, it is written in here. We probably should true this, because it doesn't sound right to me. It says, "An estimated 88 landings would be needed, eight of them exist prior, from prior timber. Requiring 80 newly constructed."
Yeah, it's gonna be true, it sounds, it doesn't sound right. It doesn't sound right. But yes, you're right, Jeanette, I mean, your statement is correct. I mean, that would be, a new landing would be a small clearcut. It would be, we'll do a call, like a patch.
Well, it does happen. It can be 40 acres total of clearcuts just from a landing.
Yep. Depending on what, regardless, who knows what kind of vegetation is growing on somewhere. And somewhere it could be a scrub stuff.
Put your head up.
Okay. Top question?
Even, those are, sort of landings are concerned, those are proposed. The actual position or actual place of a landing will appear when the sale begins to start moving along, yes. Because the landings are somewhat flexible in terms of with them. And a lot of those landing docks we have are sitting on archaeological sites.
Right. So that'll be truth at the time of implementation. Like, oh, we can't put this here because there's an archaeological site identified five from here. We're gonna put it, you know, over here instead. And you know, what we were just looking at, what we were just looking at is way back in the... You know, with these two landings side by side there, you know, those two landings are very close together for, for this, if it's this amount of wood coming out of there, it wouldn't surprise me that if there's only one landing there. Remember, this is the extent of what can happen. It can go, become less. It can't become more without a further analysis.
I had made a suggestion too, because you have two landings on Flanders Hill, one on either side. If you could aggregate it all on the east side, the existing landing, that would save the archaeological site above the cemetery.
Yeah, and some of them will get filtered out because of that reason. Like, we can't put a landing there because it's an art site, we've gotta use that one. And you know, the timber contractors are going to want to limit the amount of landings that they create as well once it goes under contract, because every landing that's constructed is an expense to them. They have to pay for it. And then they have to put it to bed at the end. So they want to reduce that number as well.
Would that mean that there'd be more truck traffic to, to the landings, the fewer landings?
No, I mean, when they're side by side like this, like, just using this as a conceptual example right here. You know, like, with those two so close together, what's, what's the reason to have two landings close together? Maybe, maybe there is one, I just don't know what it is. But that could be a case where they would say, you know, we're just gonna haul everything to this landing and we're not gonna construct this landing. Because there's no need to do that. And it could be also, I mean, going back to Eric's, going about archaeology. I don't know if that's the case here. Again, I'm talking conceptually. It could be that there's two landings here because they have to be smaller, because there's some feature around them that they can't intrude upon.
Or being or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Chris, I had made a suggestion that the project recognize Robinson as an entity. Does the Forest Service have any reaction to that?
Yeah, I mean, we talked, we talked about that and that'll probably, that would become part of the, like, the historic, what we do when we get to the CCC camp and the other things that we talked about. The Heritage Resources section will work with Andrew, our archaeologist, on trying to come up with something to recognize that. It will probably be when, at the CCC camp itself, or maybe on an interpretive side, or one of the kiosks that goes in down in that, in that area. Like, we moved that kiosk at the camp ground, it's all far away. But yeah, we did take note of that.
Joey seems fine, if anything, possible.
Yeah, again, that being private property, we probably wouldn't do anything there unless Andy wants to give us the pond and the land around it, which probably doesn't.
But you're gonna fix the dam for him.
I'm not sure. We are gonna try to help out with the dam a little bit, yeah. Not the, it's actually the dam, it's actually the sidewall, yeah.
Isn't, where is it recognized as Robinson, anywhere other than the topo, the topographical map? I've never seen that.
Robinson was, where's, where's Janice? Robinson was the mill. He was the owner of the mill, right?
One mill, yeah, we're five, so no, so one town.
It was more appropriately, Janice kept on West Rochester.
Yeah, since the post office was West Rochester.
But the idea of putting that information on one of those kiosks, I think is really very nice. You see, you're entering in...
It's spherical here.
The area that's been used and has a long...
I was thinking if we could reconstruct the plot map of where the sawmills were and the church and the stagecoach inn and the dance hall and...
Yeah, we have been working on a lot of that kind of interpretation lately, interpretation. So we will definitely...
Sweep that out though.
We will bring in the historical society when we, when we get to that phase as the partner we work with in developing it, so.
You had some tall, the Civil War guy that...
Just, just a quick question. I'm, I'm having these visions of Wing Farm Road, just getting, it's not a good road as it is. And then upper Maple Hill and down Maple Hill and logging trucks. Right now, they're working on McCulvert, and that's not a pretty picture right now.
It'll be a great improvement when it's done.
Well, yeah, but anyway, I'm just thinking of equipment, logging trucks and whether, is there some agreement with the town that there'd be road repair, maybe?
That, that's an agreement between the contractor and the towns. And our responsibility with that is to ensure that the contractor is aware that he needs to reach out to the town, have all the required permits if he's an over, if he's an overload, you know, respecting the time of year, restrictions on roads, you know, not all in a mud season, that kind of thing. But that, that relationship is entirely between the town and the contractor. Rochester is probably in a better position. They're a little more aware than some of the other. We have a lot of towns that just, they don't engage with the contractor. They, they wait till the end and the contractor, you know, reaches out to them and they don't do anything. Rochester, I'm sure, will be more on top of that particular issue. They can enter into agreements on bonds and things like that. They're supposed to have a bond with the town if there's any damage to the road, that that bond is then utilized to make the repairs to the road.
I can't imagine it's not having some damage with the heavy equipment.
When does it start?
Well, we haven't signed the decision yet, so the decision has to get signed. And we're, that's probably, at the best, we would reach a final decision probably in October. If it gets objected to and there's a process there, it could be out further into November, early December, before we reach an outcome. And then the first sales, the first timber sales are planned, scheduled at this point to be sold. to be sold, sold, not harvested, in our fiscal year nineteen, so that would be our next fiscal year. And then, most contracts have a lifespan of three to five years, timber contracts have a lifespan of three to five years, so they have to be in, they can take up to five years to harvest the area. Most of them like to get in and out a lot quicker than that, as long as there's no holdup, you know. If it's a winter harvest, winter harvest units, they're sort of at the whim of the winter. You know, if you don't get enough snow cover and the ground never freezes up, they could just, they can never get in there. So that's, contracts can get, you know, that's when they take...
I got an email from Citizens Task, of course, the mains, were saying that the amount of money from the sales was gonna be, in other words, we were not gonna be making a profit on the sales, and this is gonna be harvested, costing taxpayers to harvest it.
No, they pay us. I mean, there's, there's no cost to the taxpayer from this, the timber, the timber is sold.
But there was like, the value of the timber wasn't equal to the cost.
The value of the timber isn't equal to the cost of the, yeah, but the cost isn't borne by the public, because it's the timber purchaser that's bearing that cost. So, all timber sales are appraised at a certain value, and there's, there can be minimum bids on timber sales, that you have to reach a minimum bid, otherwise it won't be sold. And so what happens with the money that results from a timber sale is, it depends on the kind of sale it is. Typical, traditional timber sales, that money goes just back into the treasury, and it's utilized for any number of programs throughout the country. Some of it comes back to the Forest Service, some of it would go to Health and Human Services, some of it would go, you name it. There are other sales that are called stewardship sales, or there's other ways that we can kind of keep some of the money that, locally, that comes out, it's called the Knudsen Van, I'm gonna call it KB, can't say, Jay, help me out.
Knudsen Vandenberg?
Knudsen Vandenberg Act.
You're senators from the nineteen fifty's, that's why you can't remember.
And so, so it enables us to keep some of the receipts, they call it retained receipts, for us to do local work, to do watershed restoration, water protection, soil protection. Some of them allow a little bit of like, infrastructure work on roads and trails, to restore roads and trails that are impacted by timber sale activities. And then stewardship contracting is a goods-for-services exchange. You harvest this timber, and in exchange for you getting to harvest this timber and keep this timber, we want you to rehabilitate this road, we want you to, you know, do work like you do at the CCC camp, hire a contractor to do large woody debris placement, pay for this aquatic organism passage culvert. It's even, you never used to be able to do recreation-oriented work with it, but there's now some, some bills churning through Congress that would allow a more expansive look at what you can use stewardship contracts, stewardship receipts for, and so that would allow you to use it for recreation infrastructure as well. Trails, bridges.
What would the local people do?
Yeah, we stay here on this forest that we would use in this, typically in this project area to do work. They're also expanding that where we could use it outside the project area now, if there's, if there's a specific need that's identified.
So what would be the minimum bid for this project?
Whatever it's appraised at, each timber sale, I can't, I can't answer that, Jeanette. We have people that do that.
Appraised at by gordon feet, or how is that?
They appraise it by the value of the timber, I'm not a timber appraiser, I can't, I can't answer that question.
It is more feet, right? I think now they do it by cubic.
Oh, CCF?
Yeah. Which I don't relate to.
They assign a value to it.
But there will be a minimum bid based on...
Yes.
And I have no idea what that minimum bid might be.
It depends on the species too.
It really depends on the market when they do the appraisal.
If you're harvesting...
That particular sale entails, so it really depends.
And do you add to that your cost for the project? I mean, I can't imagine what, you know, just a hundred and five pages of environmental impact statement and all the research must have cost. Do you have any idea what it has, the project has cost so far, just in the analysis?
We haven't tallied the cost, I mean, we could take a ballpark estimate, I can't give it to you now, but we could sit down and put pens in the paper and try to figure that out.
I mean, it'd just be a shame to cut all the trees down and not at least make a monetary profit.
It's, to me, it's not all about monetary profit, I mean, there's a forest health and resiliency component to this as well, that if we have all mature, over-mature old growth forests, the diversity of the forest is very, very low, if it's only one suite of species that like that particular forest type, and most species need early succession habitat, they need mid-successual habitat, even species that occupy old forests, research has found that they forage and feed in openings and early succession forests, and they nest there. So it's, so it's not only a monetary thing, I mean, yes, you're right, if it was costing us millions of dollars to put out a timber sale and we were getting nothing in return for it, yeah, there would be, but there's a balance in ecological health as well that we're trying to achieve through forest management. It's wildlife management, recreation management, there's other things that are at play other than the bottom, the bottom line.
So, so in that bottom line, is that also including climate change?
Yes, we're, we're looking at climate change very closely. You're gonna, in the final EA, there's a, there's a new, we've done some additional analysis on carbon, that's gonna be in the final EA, that our researchers have done.
Coming out next week?
Next, yeah, Jay and I are hoping to finish everything up by Wednesday of next week, and then, by the end of next week.
So you guys are working all weekend?
We're trying to finish it up, we're trying to finish it up today, and we both realize that we would have to work all weekend to be able to do so, and neither of us really wanted to do that, so we punted to next week.
It's gonna rain all weekend, so you run as long as...
I gave him the weekend.
Yeah, he gave me the weekend.
Jeanette, just whatever's worth on page forty-eight of the old EA, this is a copy that we have now, this isn't gonna change in the, in the final one coming out next week, but it does, it does provide at least a cursory attempt of economic analysis from the timber portion of the project, the cost of preparing the sales and the expected monetary receipts. But it's, again, very cursory because we don't know all the specific details, so it's, it's general, best we can do upfront.
But because it's federal land, you could never benefit from the, from selling carbon sequestration by your acreage, because you're federal property, you can't gain from that, correct?
Yeah, we couldn't be in a cap and trade system, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, I mean, whereas with the private landowners, putting hundred acre blocks together and then...
Yeah, what, the Nature Conservancy just had that big article that came out about that, yeah.
Yeah. And it's a shame, because that would be a great revenue stream, but they can't build these, it's federal property.
I mean, we could still contribute to it, we just can't get paid for it.
We own a ton of sulfur when they were selling the sulfur, what did they call them? The sulfur emission? Whatever? Yes. We have a ton.
You bought a ton of sulfur. Does it smell?
No smell.
No smell?
I'm glad to hear that there was further analysis done on the carbon sequestration and the release.
Yeah.
With that, there's more coming all the time, as that, as that research advances and it gets more fine tuned, there's more coming out all the time.
Yeah, I'm not even gonna pretend to understand it all, but we had a couple of soil, I'm sorry, carbon scientists from the research branch of the Forest Service, I was in a Washington office, working with us, and they've used, they've put together this pretty extensive, peer-reviewed, scientific literature-based report on the carbon stock influx of the Green Mountain National Forest, and then what that means, cite specifically on the Robinson Project.
Is this supposed to be, that's public?
Yeah, it'll be part of the record.
It'll be part of this.
Yeah. Environmental assessment, all of the literature is cited, it's publicly available.
And they'll announce that one is available?
It'll be available once this is...
It'll be available next week.
Put this out there.
Because this document estimated that within seven years, the carbon sequestration would be equivalent to what it is now, which is beyond my ability to believe that seven-year-old scrub can be sequestering the same as a mature tree. But there's more of them.
Well, and you're getting rid of some of the stuff that's gonna die and give off more carbon than it's sequestering anyway, so you're balancing that forest health so that in seven years, you're back to a point that you'll never achieve if you don't do anything right now. If you do nothing, you'll never get there.
Yeah, and you're referring specifically to one very small component, and that was the only part of the document that addressed it, is in, in relation to the prescribed fire on a pretty small portion of the project area, and that's who our fuels ecologist put together as far as the amount of carbon emissions from that burning, that's what that was about. This, what I'm talking about...
Oh, okay, so they're saying that it would take seven years just to recoup the carbon released in the burning?
Correct.
Now that makes more sense.
Yeah, that's what that was specific to. This addition to the analysis that we're talking about now talks about carbon, the carbon sink, carbon source, carbon influx, influence of this project on that dynamic here on this forest, from timber harvesting. So you can look at that and see what you think, when it comes out.
I'm just not a believer that when you cut down a mature tree, and you lose all that carbon sequestration, that that tree's doing every day, well, during leaf season, and removing that times thousands, that you're not contributing to climate change by leaving all that carbon in the atmosphere that otherwise would have been sucked out.
That's what the report's about, right?
Read the important part.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is new stuff that you guys are working with, because we're at a crucial point, and everybody's sweating in here, I'm sweating in here, is that we gotta start deciding exactly how to manage this wood related to this issue.
So, wait until next week.
Yeah, everything could change by next week.
Is it, is it, is it safe to assume that a healthy forest would take care of more carbon than what we presently have? I'm saying like, six, seven, eight years down the road. I mean, this is to improve the forest, the thing and all, I mean, it would seem that you're getting a better stand of timber, that it would be capable of, you know, getting more carbon out of the...
Scientists, scientists are gonna be letting this in on, right?
Oh, I mean, I don't know.
That's what they're doing, that's what they're in the process of figuring out.
Yeah, I mean, based what I've read, based what I've read, that's, that's a truth, that you're healthier, more resilient forest, certainly, it's gonna be taking more carbon out of the atmosphere, it must store it as a stock than mature forest. When it reaches a state of maturity, it's done, it's not really taking much.
Like, California, they burn it, and there's a lot of shit going into the...
I don't think it has anything to do with growing each one of those leaves on that mature tree, no matter how mature it is.
But as a tree matures, it then, like all of us do, starts to senest a little bit, branches die, you lose some of that crown, you lose some of the vigor that it has, at that point, it's not absorbing the amount of carbon as a mature, healthy, robust teenager might be doing. So, I think that's what, you know, the research is gonna tell us.
Yeah, it's, yeah, just wait, I understand your question, right, and we could debate it and talk about it for the rest of the evening, just hold your, hold your thoughts, and then if there's something in that report that just doesn't sit well with you, you know, I'm sure we'll hear from you on that. But the point is, is that there's a lot of research that, that is cited that substantiates what's in the report, so dive in. Dive in and look at that, and look through it, see what you think.
Yeah, carbon's one of those things where you want those questions to look at.
Yeah, it'll be part of the final, yeah, yeah, it'll be online.
So what's that part called, not analysis, but what's the next step? So you have on your Robinson Project, scoping, re-scoping, analysis, what's that one gonna be?
We'll release the final EA.
Final EA.
Okay, so what the final EA means is it's all the, we've taken into consideration all the comments that we received on the draft, either preliminary EA, we've looked at those, we've incorporated those, we'll respond to those comments, and we put out the final EA, it will look something like this, there will be maybe small changes to this based on the comments that we received, and then, and the carbon, what we were just talking about, it's the big change that will be in it, relates to carbon. And then, the draft decision notice, so the final decision, but in a draft form, unsigned, will go out accompanying it, okay? And then that will go out for a forty-five day objection period. And then, that, once that forty-five day objection, day objection period passes, if there are objections, then we will go, there'll be eight objections.
There's a forty-five day objection review period, and an objection team separate from this office, the Forest Service specialists, probably in our regional office in Milwaukee, will review it and provide feedback to Chris as the responsible official on what may or may not need to be addressed.
That could be another forty-five days.
It's a forty-five day review process. And then, and then Chris to just say, just for sake of argument, there's issues that need to be addressed because of the objection or objections, then, Chris would have to have his, his source team address those in the final rendering of the environmental assessment before he can sign the decision notice.
And then we can probably comment during the process?
But other publics, individuals can be involved in that objection process.
And that's the difference between the appeals process and the objection process, which you were talking about before, in the appeals process, there was no involvement, it was like that hard wall, you appealed, okay, now you're the appealer, I'm the Forest Service, we're not gonna talk, we are gonna have separate things, and we will render our decision on this appeal, somebody else would. With the objections process, we can talk, we can work together, we can bounce things back and forth, we can make small changes, we can make changes to the decision based on what we find out. And then at the end of that, if there are no objections, then the decision will be signed, it will be final, and we work on the implementation plan and starting to implement some of the things.
Do we need to wait for funding?
Depends on what, some things we need to wait for funding on, some things like a timber sale, or some of the things that, or special use permits, things like that, we would just go ahead and start to issue those, we would get the, it's not really low-hanging fruit, but the low-hanging fruit. And then some of the things will certainly take longer, the repeater sites, some of the trail work would, would take longer because we'd be looking for funding. And then anything that would need, you know, further, that's conceptual, like the trails, some of the other things we talked about today, that are, you know, they're in the decision, we know what we wanna do, we know within a sphere of influence where we wanna do it, but they need to be ground truth, that would happen prior to any implementation. So you'd get archaeologists, botanists, soil scientists, whomever out on the ground, wildlife biologists, to check those, that areas before it got implemented, even once we had funding.
At least as far as the archaeologist goes, that means then...
You have to have consultation.
But that means then there's a factoring area on the sand.
No, I wasn't talking about, I wasn't talking about the sale area, Eric, I'm sorry. In that context, that I was saying, I was thinking more about the trail, like the recreation project, they need to get out on the ground and like, truth exactly where the trail is going. The timber things, that will have to be worked out before it goes to contracting, before it goes out to bid, you would have to have all the ark sites reserved out.
Well, you said you weren't gonna work this weekend, and you are working this weekend right now.
Thank you, great. So there are, the ladies who came in late, I think there's four of you, if you wouldn't mind coming over here and just writing your name down so we know who is here today, that would be very helpful.
You need help putting your stuff together?